Yeah, we're good. We got everything good to go, Michelle? All right. My mic and call to order the Thursday, December fifth, two thousand nineteen meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. And we will start asking everyone to rise and ask Commissioner Hawkins to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Hey, thank you, Michelle. Can we have roll call, please?
Kathleen Taylor.
Here.
Peter Gower.
Here.
Ed Hawkins.
Here.
John Marshall is absent. Paul Levis.
Here.
Alex Velto.
Here.
Mark Johnson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on the agenda, next item is public comment. This item is for public comment and any action item or any general public comment. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
We will move on to the approval of the minutes from the Reno City Planning Commission meeting on October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed or abstentions?
Commissioner Levis abstain.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is zoning code update, item five point one. Arlo, good evening. Or good morning, according to the clock behind you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Arlo Stockham, Community Development Director. Thank you for starting the meeting early this evening. The purpose of this presentation is informational. We intend to present the entire content of the draft, initial draft ordinances for the Title eighteen update at a high level. We're not planning to get into discussions and deliberations and debate at this meeting. My presentation should be thirty to forty minutes. What we are going to be requesting is some planning commission discussion on the process that you would like to use to discuss and deliberate and make recommendations on this initial draft. The city council is, the dates are a little bit in flux, but they're looking at scheduling a special meeting in late January or early February. And our hope is to have recommendations from the planning commission complete before that workshop occurs, as well as our technical working group meetings. So maybe after the presentation, we can have a little discussion on process, whether perhaps you want to allocate time at your regular meetings or schedule a special meeting or two to go through it. Whatever the preference of the commission is, we'd be happy to accommodate. So with that being said, I will start talking and provide an overview. We're excited to have a draft document out on the streets. Just our agenda, the three code chapters have been coming out in modules. Modules one and two have been released and are out on the streets. And module one's been out for a couple of months. Module two's been out for about a month now. And module three is coming out in probably next, well, it'll be either next Friday or the following Monday. So in about eight to ten days, we'll have the entire document out for review. This should allow about a month for everyone to read it over, absorb, collect thoughts, have discussions. And then hopefully, we can get some high level input on suggested changes. We'll go through this whole process and then repeat. I think I have a slide a little more on the process. As you recall, this slide, a big piece of the update is ease of use and organization, those last two bullet points, as well as implementation of the master plan. Not to measure ordinances in inches, but I have over the years learned that one of the challenges of our code is its excessive complexity. It's more complex than it needs to be to do what it does. So really, the bulk of a code does matter. So the draft, our code today is about the thickness of a four by four. It's very hard to navigate, about three and a half inches thick, hard to find everything. You have to bounce around. The initial draft of the new code is as thick as a two by four. We've about eliminated half the bulk. There isn't really, there isn't elimination of content. In fact, there may be more content. There's more details on development standards. But this is largely the function of improved organization, not just in bulk, but also how it's organized more sequentially. And I'll be going through the document in sequence where really, if you're working up a development project, in effect, you'll be able to start at the first chapter and work your way through sequentially. And you won't have to do all the bouncing back and forth that we have in our current code. In terms of the implementation of the master plan, you'll see in a lot of the development standard chapters that I'll be talking about that the categories and the different regulations are based on the different categories in the master plan, the map in the middle, the structure plan. The development standards are organized kind of in those same categories. And then, of course, the land use plan. As mentioned, the first two modules are out and available for review. Anyone watching at home, it's at reno.gov/zoning. You can access all the background information, the draft ordinances, et cetera. And part three on procedures will be published here within a week and a half. So now I'll dive into basically what's in the document, chapter by chapter. Well, before I do chapter by chapter format, we've added a bunch of tools for reviewers to help understand what's changed, what's new, and why. Those are in the form of commentary boxes at the top of each major section, kind of explaining the gist of, is this existing ordinance? Is it changed ordinance? Where did it come from? What are the high level topics being changed? And then more detailed footnotes, generally for each section. Some of them are covering multiple sections. Is it existing content? You generally won't see a footnote. But new content will have footnotes explaining that. The organization of the code I mentioned earlier is more sequential. Those chapters highlighted in blue are the ones that came out with the development standards module, which is by far the most consequential of them, module two. But it starts with the general provisions, then it goes into zoning districts, the land uses, the development standards, signs, land division, historic preservation, and the procedures, and then definitions. So this is a more logical, kind of sequential organization of code that won't require as much flipping back and forth for users. For the chapter eighteen oh one, the general provisions, as I go through, I'm not going to speak a lot to the topics that aren't changing. I'm going to focus more on what is proposed to change. Some modest modifications in chapter eighteen oh one. One of note will be the nonconformance section. We've made it a little less cumbersome to do an improvement or addition to an existing nonconforming structure. This would be something that maybe a building that doesn't meet current setbacks that did back in the day when it was built. We currently have a lot of conditions that you can expand if that or that. And those have been an impediment to redevelopment of some of our older areas, blighted areas, some of the underserved areas, where it just becomes, they become barriers to be able to improve existing development. It still requires that all of the improvements be in conformance with the new standards, but it more broadly allows improvements for nonconforming structures. Also, for whatever reason, we have a bunch of limitations. If your home burns down, it doesn't necessarily allow you to rebuild it if it doesn't meet current setbacks. There are a bunch of criteria. And we felt that in the event of a disaster, someone should be able to rebuild what they have without jumping through a bunch of hoops and meeting a bunch of requirements that they may or may not be able to meet. That's the biggest change in this chapter. There are also, there's also a section at the end speaking to the procedure of how we transition from the old code to the new code. In effect, it's, if you're in process under the old code, you can continue to use it. Or you may choose to use the new draft, for instance, if it's a special use permit approved under old code. But you can't pick and choose from both. And we may also have a situation in a few areas, depending how the public input process plays out, where we might want to give a period of time where people can continue using the old code before the new one goes in effect. We may want to do that in some targeted areas. We can get into that down the road as we have, as this kind of evolves. Chapter eighteen oh two, zoning districts. The biggest changes here are organizational, well, a few different changes. The consolidated one-page format, I think you heard a presentation on this one previously, so I'll go pretty quickly. But it's a much more consolidated organization of the purpose statement, the height, the setback, kind of those base regulations. Each zoning district fits on one page, so you can just go to those pages. The other significant change here is the consolidation of mixed-use zoning districts. We talked about this during the issue sheet process and the presentation on the first module. Getting rid of most of the overlay zoning districts for the mixed-use areas, that's been an exceedingly complicated structure for people to use. It's resulted in confusion from applicants and mistakes from staff where it's just hard to catch everything. We have our planner of the day where folks can come in and ask questions about our code to understand the regulations. That has turned into more than a full-time job for our planning staff. We're basically spending one and a half FTEs every week just answering questions about people confused about the code. And a lot of it has to do with overlay standards. So this simplification should be a great improvement for uses, users. The biggies, three of the big new zoning districts where a bunch of the more detailed, kind of small geographic area overlay districts got consolidated. You'll see in the mixed-use urban districts, these are urban corridors outside downtown, generally inside the McCarran Ring. Mixed-use suburban is the corridors, the suburban corridors outside the McCarran Ring. And mixed employment is the new district, kind of to replace industrial business and kind of more of a, not industrial, but kind of a lighter scale employment, light industrial, commercial, office-type district that's more reflective of the business environment today. Downtown district changes, a couple targeted ones. The university district has some more limited uses. Vice would no longer be permitted in that area, like non-restricted gaming, marijuana sales, things like that would no longer be allowed next to UNR and in the university district. And then the reductions in allowed intensity in the pounding district. And we have had quite a bit of input on this, and I think we'll be recommending some refinements in more of a transitional area as that district moves towards downtown. So we can talk about that more next month. Residential districts, effectively unchanged. There's a renaming of single-family districts to use consistent methodology of acreage for density and acreage rather than square feet, so that's all consistent. But really, no substantive change to the setbacks, the lot sizes allowed in all of our residential, heights allowed in all of our residential zoning districts. You'll see placeholders for the conservation district overlays for the three designated historic areas, pounding, Newlands, and Wells Avenue districts. Those are intended to be developed later through our neighborhood outreach program, as will kind of zoning map amendments and that whole step-two process of this update where we get down to the lot and block level of should we change the zoning map in specific neighborhood areas? That would be done in consultation with neighborhoods and outreach and notification and things like that. Chapter eighteen oh three, the use regulations. I think I've presented this before, the use table. It's a single land use table rather than the five tables we have. That alone cut about a hundred pages out of our code, and it allows users to go to one place to see if they want to establish a new use. You can just go down the table and see which districts it's allowed in. If you have a property and you know what it's zoned, you can go down the list and see what uses you're allowed to do. So it's a much improved organization. Tools for reviewers have colors to highlight what's changed from the prior code, whether the uses are more permissive, less permissive, a consolidation, some of the new uses being established, the references to the applicable standards. So this, this is, staff's really excited about this, as excited as you can be about zoning. It should make it a lot easier for people to use and understand what's allowed and what isn't allowed. Not very many changes here. As we discussed during the issue sheet process, we really want to approach land use changes, especially in the neighborhood areas, with sensitivity and with consultation with those involved. So you don't see sweeping changes in terms of what uses are allowed in each district, but there are some targeted changes. Restaurants are permitted in this document in the higher density multifamily districts, whereas they're not today. There are some additional limits for auto-oriented uses in our core areas, downtown and urban mixed use. There's the consolidation of mixed-use districts, obviously. We tried to keep the standards generally comparable to how they are now. So the mixed-use areas, down Virginia Street, out Fourth Street, are generally unchanged in terms of their bulk and height and intensity limits. But there was some changes necessitated through the consolidation, so there are some targeted areas where some of those standards change. The bulk of changes are coming in development standards, which we'll get to in a little bit. We have some new use categories and just some targeted cleanup that his staff went through this table. A few things just didn't make sense, so you'll see some changes there. And the use-based standards, things like what you have to do for outdoor storage are generally retained, although they are consolidated. In the outdoor storage example, I think we had eight or ten different sections dealing with requirements for outdoor storage, and they weren't all the same. That's been consolidated into one. Chapter eighteen four is the by far biggest chapter and most important chapter of the development code, and this was part of module two that was released about a month ago. So I'm going to walk through this one in more detail. I haven't presented this to this body to date. Organization, essentially, it starts at the ground and works up. So the initial, the initial article, natural resource protection, our flood ordinances, our hillside ordinances, those types of things. Then you get into the grading standards, hillside development standards, streets and utilities, access, parking, landscaping, kind of all your site improvements. We haven't gotten to structures yet. Then when we move on to article eight, nine, and ten, these are very significant new articles that have consolidated the site and building design standards. They're organized as three separate chapters, so they generally address the same topics, but they do so differently for residential districts, mixed-use districts, and non-residential districts. I'll speak to this more later. Article eleven is unchanged improvement standards. Article twelve, exterior lighting, with some expanded, we have very minimal standards for outdoor lighting. Those are expanded. And another biggie, article thirteen, on residential adjacency, expanded residential adjacency standards. So the changes, really the biggest, one of the big suites of changes are on these development standards, and they're generally targeted to implementing the master plan policies, whether it's sustainability, improved walkability, bikeability, housing affordability, you'll see a lot of those, compatibility. You'll see a lot of those topics kind of featured in some additional standards in these chapters, or these articles, sorry. So I'll click through each of them, slide each. Natural resource protection, you may recall during our issue sheet process, we had a discussion kind of on the scope. And it was generally decided to address updates to natural resource protection standards separately from this overarching code update. So things like changes to the flood hazard ordinance or the major drainage way ordinances or things like that are moving through separate processes. Some are underway, some may get initiated in the future. Really, the only two significant changes in this draft are to codify the additional stormwater retention requirements that we've been doing as conditions of approval to make that a code standard in the North Valleys Closed Basin areas. And also a new section on source water protection. This is for protection of our drinking water wells. It does not establish new regulation. It's a notification process by which Tamwa would monitor potentially polluting uses and essentially monitor, and if there are violations of state laws with deal, which deal with pollution prevention, they would get on top of them because the state really doesn't have enforcement. If there's a diesel spill right next to a drinking water well, the state is probably not going to notice. But Tamwa wants to spend more resources protecting our drinking water, and this is a tool by which they could do that. We worked very closely with Tamwa, with the One Truckee River Group in development of this framework. It was initially discussed to be an overlay district, and through the discussions and development, really, their concern was almost citywide that a diesel spill almost anywhere in the city could potentially affect a well. So we just made it a generally applicable standard that things like gas stations or, you know, potentially polluting uses would have to notify Tamwa before they got permits issued. Significant changes in article two, we discussed this. I know this is going to be a major topic of discussion as we move forward in terms of grading and hillside development. I've bundled two and three together. The basic framework is a streamlined development review process, especially for smaller projects in conjunction with significantly enhanced regulations for how grading is done and the treatment of slopes and hillside developments. We don't know if this is the best landing point, but it's a good start. A lot of this is modeled after, one, conditions of approval that you're regularly applying to developments and other community ordinances, in particular in the city of Sparks. So with this, it focuses more on the end condition of a graded site. So the requirements for cuts and fills, for special use permits based on cuts and fills, would go away. And the same requirement for use permits for hillside developments would go away for projects under ten acres in size, the same way Sparks handles it. However, the standards for grading However, the standards for grading and hillside development, as proposed, would be the strictest in northern Nevada by far. I don't know if we want to go this strict or not this strict, but a lot of these new standards, you've been conditioning case by case. It takes an exceedingly large amount of staff time to kind of negotiate hillside developments and how big can your fill slope be, how far can you cut into the slope. It's a lot of back and forth, and staff doesn't have a lot of regulatory or policy guidance to really make a call as to how much is too much. I think we can all agree that, you know, some grading is needed, but we don't want projects to completely bulldoze entire mountains and flatten them out. But where is that balance in the middle is what we're trying to find, and we would really benefit from some guidelines, whatever they are, of essentially how much is too much and what should you do. So it's not just a back-and-forth negotiation and a decision at the planning commission and council, which in the past have resulted in kind of inconsistent requirements between developments, depending on who the planner was, how many people showed up in opposition, those types of things. So we're trying to get a little more consistent, as well as essentially making it a requirement that you do hillside-sensitive to design. It's not a no-grading thing, but in general, you shouldn't flatten out a mountainside to build a flat pad, hillside architecture, stepped grading, transitions and contouring in our fill slopes, things like that. So this is going to be one of a number of major topics. As we go through next month, we do intend to kind of group and focus on major topics that we've received a lot of public input on, and we are assembling a very large list of all the input we've gotten, and no doubt this will be one of those. Changes in Article 4, focus, these are, these were really done in conjunction with our Public Works Department. We currently have a number of inconsistencies in different sections of code in terms of sidewalk requirements, curb requirements. Title 18 differs from the Public Works Design Manual, so we're trying to sync it all up to be, one, consistent, two, to promote multimodal transportation, and kind of have one standard that we all agree on. So some of that starts in Article 4 here. It's aligned with the Public Works standards. There's some changes noted where we had inconsistencies, generally aligned to be consistent with the practice that's been used. A significant change is five-foot-wide sidewalks. We require four-foot wide currently. The ADA does allow four feet, as long as you have passing lanes. In a four-foot sidewalk, two wheelchairs can't pass. In a five-foot sidewalk, they can. Most cities around the country have gone to five-foot sidewalks, but it is a cost. So this is going to be another topic of discussion, no question. This is being proposed in conjunction with some changes to the Public Works Designs Manual that will reduce the required width of roadways. So in effect, we're making the roads narrower and the sidewalks wider to provide a better pedestrian environment and more traffic calming. Topic for discussion, no doubt. We've also clarified what was, what is currently a pretty confusing standard for sidewalk waivers, where it's kind of a judgment call and there's not a lot of consistent criteria, and it also requires kind of duplicate processes from community development and public works, which we've consolidated here into one. That's Article 4. Article 5, access connectivity and circulation retains what we have now and adds two new sections, one for street connectivity. This essentially prohibits a subdivision that's all cul-de-sacs. There's a certain amount of through-street connectivity required in that section. I don't know if it's the right number, I can't remember, it might have been 25%. And then also pedestrian and bicycle connectivity standards, that among other things, where you do have cul-de-sacs, it would require a pedestrian connection between the two cul-de-sacs so someone doesn't have to walk half-mile out and around to a major street to get to a house on a different cul-de-sac that's really only 100 yards away. Again, focusing on the bicycle and pedestrian transportation element and implementing the master plan. This is probably, parking is, no joke, probably 50% of the input we've received is on parking alone. This is by far the biggest issue we've heard from the community, by far. And so good points and debates on each side of the topic. For me? They, sorry, where was I going on that? So on parking, there's some key changes here. One is trying to standardize it. We have a patchwork of different requirements for how much parking is required in different areas. In general, we require way too much parking in our suburban areas. Those parking rates were established over 20 years ago, and, you know, you go to any planning conference and they'll tell you, we're requiring way, way, way too much. And you see that in places like the Home Depots out in the suburban areas where there, you just never see a full parking lot. So we're reducing those standards overall. But at the same time, we currently have these various parking reductions in different areas. Some areas require none, some areas it's like 50% less. Every different overlay district kind of has a different parking standard. And we have these opportunities for waivers for staff, where we can kind of accept a study and approve something different, which has some merit, but it's also become kind of the standard practice, and it's just too high maintenance for everyone, for staff, for applicants, everyone. So the proposal is essentially three tiers of parking. Downtown, the proposal is no parking requirements. It would be market-driven for businesses in the downtown area. This is currently in place in the California Avenue District and has worked out pretty well. Off-site or onsite parking is, as we have people coming in asking about redeveloping the downtown area, this is by far the number-one impediment for people reusing underutilized space in the downtown. You know, you have a high-rise building, there's no parking, you want to do a new use, and you can't meet the parking standard. And that has killed many, many projects over the years. We have so far heard overwhelming support for that downtown discretionary parking standard. I'm sure there's opposition out there, but it hasn't really landed at my desk yet. The next level is what we called Level 1. These are urban-type parking rates that would apply in the midtown districts and the mixed-use urban district. Generally, these are aligned with ITE and American Planning Association recommendations for urban areas with transit service. So for example, for a residential unit, it would be one parking space per unit, which is already in place in many areas, including all of South Virginia Street. So this is, might not be a lot of change for some areas like midtown and South Virginia, but other areas that don't have those special reductions, it is. There was a very healthy discussion at the last technical working group meeting with a number of proponents to expand discretionary parking down into the midtown area and out beyond downtown. Again, the parking being the major impediment to redevelopment in a lot of those areas. However, in the midtown area, and it's reflected by views of the merchants and others, there also is demand for parking. So this draft kind of took a middle approach, where there is still requirements for off-street parking, but it's less. And then the Level 2 is everywhere else, more suburban areas that aren't transit-served, again, generally reduced from what we require now, but higher than the other two areas. In conjunction with that, there are expanded allowances for off-site parking and shared parking. So relaxed limitations for if you have a parking area maybe 1,000 feet away in the midtown area, that would be okay under the new code. It's not okay under our current code. And this is all being done in conjunction with a broader citywide effort. I don't think we've presented to you, but the city was awarded a grant from the Bloomberg Institute, or basically the philanthropy branch, to bring us some technical resources to help with the overall citywide parking strategy. So that's kickstarting right now. We essentially have, I think it's about a quarter million dollars of professional resources available to help us with what's worked in other communities, what hasn't. It sounds like the general kind of high-level direction is, again, significantly reduced parking requirements for individual parcels, being done in conjunction with kind of public parking areas, whether it's government-created or business-created, kind of area parking, like you see in a lot of other communities, where it's a big parking lot within a quarter-mile of a shopping district or whatever it is. So you don't have to have individual parking lots on every parcel, but there's parking within walking distance of all the businesses. So that's expanded. Some other targeted changes that are kind of fallout of those changes is recalibrating the maximum parking. We have had quite a bit of input that we don't need maximum parking requirements, especially if we're looking at more off-site parking and things like that. As of now, maximum parking would only apply in the Level 2 area. The idea being in midtown, if someone really has extra land and they can provide some extra parking and then maybe, you know, lease it out to another business, that's a good thing. We shouldn't limit that. Some modestly expanded parking reductions for affordable housing. We already have that in place. That's expanded a little bit and broadened the applicability. And a trip reduction ordinance for major employers. We were intending to kind of sync this up with the RTC Smart Trips program, and that hasn't quite evolved to the point of a regulatory program. So this, this section may evolve through the process, we'll have to see. So that's a big chapter. More targeted changes to the landscaping chapter, although we do have scheduled next week a focus session with ASLA, Association of Landscape Architects, or American Society of Landscape Architects. I think they're proposing some cleanup-type things, of things that have been problematic. But overall, there are a few changes. There's some new standards prioritizing shade trees in the design of landscape plans. There's some refinements to the minimum landscape required in MU and MS districts that kind of reflect middle density a little better. There's updated screening requirements. We just had some weird glitches in our screening standards, like what you have to do between industrial and single-family or commercial and single-family, whatever it may be, updated those. Requirements for recycling containers, and some really quite minor changes to the fencing standards. Very targeted, limited changes in landscaping as currently drafted. These are very significant chapters or articles. Articles 8, 9, and 10, I mentioned earlier, the site and building standards. It's a combination of existing requirements, kind of consolidate it all into one place so you can go to one place and see what all your site and building standards are, with some significant new standards proposed, again, to implement the master plan design principles. So they're all organized pretty similarly and address the same topics, but they address them in different ways. Article 8 applies to the residential zoning districts, 9, the mixed-use districts, 10, the non-residential districts. And each of those articles also have some supplemental standards after the general standards that apply to certain zoning districts only. Many of those are carried forward. But the general topics addressed in all of these are kind of three biggies. The site develop, site layout and development pattern, kind of how you lay out your property, relationship to major roadways, the streetscape, sidewalks, parkways, et cetera. And those are enhanced standards in many areas. Parking and garage locations, building location and orientation, and then there are some specifics in different articles as well. Then there's language on circulation and access and connectivity, things of that nature that kind of supplement the general standards for the different types of zoning districts, and then the building design standards. We definitely anticipate these three articles being major topics of discussion, and I failed to mention at the beginning, this is very much a work-in-process. I hope nobody takes this as kind of a done-deal final. We have initial draft language. We've already found some glitches that we will be recommending adjusting. We've already received some input with some good suggestions for adjustment. So this is the first of three rounds of kind of a review and refinement process. We hope we get kind of the big-picture stuff addressed through this round, consolidated draft, hopefully more refinement, and then an adoption draft kind of coming down to any final debates that may exist. So this is, there'll be many cuts at the apple, sorry about this, it's going to put you all to sleep, but it's very important as developments come in. Article 8, the general standards I mentioned. The supplemental standards for single-family districts, these are the residential street image standards are retained and not changed from the existing code. And we also, one of the glitches is organizationally, the new standards for setbacks, stepbacks, and residential compatibility. I think I presented that when I was last in front of you, kind of you can't go straight up to your maximum height, right on your side setback line. As you go taller, you kind of have to peel back a little bit to avoid kind of the infill, you know, massive homes looming over their neighbors. It kind of peels that back a little bit on the upper floors. Those should be moved here. They're not currently located here, but they need to be in the next draft. Article 9, the mixed-use districts. Again, the same general standards, also a sustainability section in there, kind of modeled after the current sustainability section for the mixed-use districts. And then the supplemental standards for downtown are generally retained. The Truckee River corridor requirements, we're retaining, they're pretty detailed. So not a lot of changes in substance, but there's some organizational changes, aside from the Pounding District changes mentioned earlier. Supplemental standards for other districts, we have certain areas where there are additional standards already in code that make sense, those are kept. And then the large retail establishment ordinance, I'm not sure when you've last seen one of these, but that's been in place, and that's generally maintained, just with a little cleanup to address some redundancies and inconsistencies, but the substance of it has not changed. Non-residential districts, these are the industrials and lighter districts down to mixed employment. The same, again, site layout, circulation, and building design standards, same organization, different words within those sections to be more reflective of more employment areas. Sustainability element requirements, and this is a significant new section, new standards for residential on industri, or more of the reverse, industrial next to residential. That's been a difficult issue for everyone, and there's some new standards kind of requiring additional buffering and protection of residential properties, kind of based on the scale of the industrial buildings being proposed, and also addressing things like loading docks and orientation and those types of things. This is intended to address, or not address, but help mitigate a lot of the issues you see with these very large-box industrial buildings coming in in proximity to existing homes. That's addressed here, and the airport district standards are retained that we have now. Articles 11, 14, and 15 have no substantive changes to them, so we can skip talking about those. Exterior lighting, this was the first draft, and this one is, a lot of these chapters, staff and consultants worked very closely to make sure that, you know, we took kind of the national expertise that Clarion provides of what's working in other communities, but every community is different, and someone from Denver really doesn't know what's right for Reno. So staff really spent a lot of time wordsmithing the various standards, but not really so much here in the lighting standards. We basically had Clarion give us a model ordinance as a starting point, and we'll go from there. It's not exceedingly strict, but it definitely codifies some dark-skY lighting standards, typical of what they've been seeing communities adopt around the country. Our current code is less than one page, it says very little if anything, but we typically condition dark-skY lighting, anyway. So it addresses, you know, the lighting types, the shieldings, the light levels, controls, et cetera. Then we have sections on parking lot lighting, and then a special section on lighting for outdoor recreation and entertainment, the stadiums, the ballfields, things like that. These standards don't apply in the downtown area, so downtown can continue to be very bright. Outside downtown will have, you know, not unreasonably strict, but dark-skY lighting standards. So I'm sure this will get refined through the process. Lot of discussion as we've gone through the issue sheets and kind of scoping process of residential adjacency standards. These are expanded. These address a lot of issues that often come up in the course of review of these types of projects. You see them frequently in conditions, and a lot of the conditions that you've seen over and over again get codified here. The applicability is a little bit different than our current one. We expanded from adjacent to residential to also address development within 150 feet of residential property. There, you know, can be significant impacts from a big non-residential development, you know, one parcel... know, one parcel away from residential. We replace the special use permit review requirement with a site plan review requirement. This is still publicly noticed and appealable, but this would be a streamlined process for little projects that are non-contested. They'd still get public notice, and it would be a staff decision after 30 days. So if it's non-controversial, boom, they're in, they're out. It's pretty quick. It's inexpensive. If it gets appealed, as you'll hear in a later section here, it would come up to you and essentially be treated similarly to how special use permits happen now. So that's a relief valve for small developments and kind of the heavy burden that a special use permit process can put on a small business. We also have some exemptions for the discretionary review across freeways and major arterial roadways. We might refine that a little bit, well, we might refine that a little bit, depending on discussion. So these address a range of potential impacts. They are generally focused not on prohibiting development of, say, commercial use next to residential, but on getting a site design that as much as feasible, you know, minimizes impacts on the adjacent residential, whether it's the use limitations and the location of those uses, grading, site orientation and building orientation, signs, no lit signs on the back of a building facing a home, lighting, noise, odor, location of parking lots, cut through traffic, and loading. Again, another big topic that I'm sure will be worthy of discussion as we dive into the meat of it after the New Year. Chapter 1805, signs, as discussed during the issue sheets, we're hoping not to open up that can of worms together with this project that may be addressed as a separate distinct project. However, we did have to come into compliance with a unanimous Supreme Court ruling, Reed v. Gilbert, and how that affects us is on our temporary signs. The ruling effectively says what we're doing in terms of having a different requirement for political signs, for instance, and temporary real estate signs. Our current code has different standards for each of those. We need to change that to come into conformance here. So we generally kept the standards we have. We merged them into a single temporary sign standard, and we kept it as close as we could to what's existing, and where we had to make some changes, we went with the more generous allowance. There were differences in terms of how long they could stay was the biggest difference, but also some minor differences in terms of the allowed size of the temporary signs. So we're going to have to land on something to not be, have exposure legally. Maybe that can get nuanced around along the way. Land division section, no changes to that. Those are kind of our subdivision standards that engineering staff implements with subdivisions. Historic preservation, next chapter, has some significant changes. The master plan is really quite specific on changes that we should pursue, and we've pursued those. So it's a simplification of the designation process. There is a process for the Historic Resource Commission to review development that's adjacent to a designated historic resource, and this is a locally designated historic resource. So there's the Reno Register and the Federal Register. This applies to the Reno Register. Modifications to the mitigation process for loss of structures, actually a significant change. This would allow, if someone really ultimately wants to tear down a historically designated structure, they can do that today. It's like a wait and process. This one adds a little nuance that if they're just going to tear it down and there's no mitigation that the property owner is interested in pursuing, the HRC could pursue either picking up and lifting up the structure and taking it somewhere else, or salvaging parts for it through a, you know, sensitive way, but there would be a process by which those historic resources, if the property owner didn't want to preserve them, they just wanted to take them to a dump, the HRC could initiate on that. There's been some discussion, and there was a proposal of giving the council and the city effectively the power to deny a demo permit for a designated historic resource. Some places do that. There's some merit in that. We recommended against that because it felt like a bait and switch. Everyone who nominated their structure now did so under an incentive-based program that did not give the government the right to prohibit demolition and use more incentives, and we felt that changing that on people and saying, oh, now we have that right, didn't seem quite fair, and it would also discourage the designation of future resources. So we tried to kind of strike a middle ground on that one. More streamlining for the certificate of appropriateness. This is the permit you need to make modifications to a historic structure, designated historic structure. Demolition by neglect provision. If someone's just letting a building collapse into the ground, not maintaining it, in effect, through a long process, it could effectively be designated as a proposed demolition and ultimately trigger the mitigation process for loss of resource. So that's a new standard called for in the master plan. And the incentive program might get more further evolved. The HRC kind of recommended putting this into a work program to develop in the future. It would be nice to come up with some more incentives through this update process, and I'm hoping that can be done through the revisions, but if not, it would be essentially a work program to develop that in the future. I'm almost done. Thank you for bearing with me. Procedures, last significant chapter, I believe. Reduce reliance on special use permit. We really focused the changes in a targeted way to relieve process requirements for smaller or less controversial projects and maintain process safeguards for larger, more consequential projects. So there's a significant move for more site plan reviews. Again, those are publicly noticed. They're appealable decisions, but they're quicker and easier if it's not appealed. So you'll see a lot more of that. Also, a significant change right now, our site plan review appeals goes to the hearings examiner, which is a lawyer with not much land use expertise or interest, and it really doesn't make a lot of sense on some of these planning judgment calls. We're recommending that site plan review appeals be reviewed by this body instead, and then ultimately can end up at council, of course. And then there's some increased exemptions we discussed during the issue sheets for minor additions to approved projects. So you wouldn't necessarily have to go, you know, staff could approve, for example, a 20% addition that complies with all the new standards rather than a 10% addition that we currently can. That's a big suite of changes. The next are flexibility and relief provisions. These are commonly used alternatives to variances that give a public process and an opportunity for applicants to propose things that differ from the letter of the code without doing a variance. So these are some opportunities that don't require that special circumstance or hardship finding. Minor deviations we already use. We want to maximize that, but that's only 10%. It's pretty insignificant, and it requires written consent of neighboring owners. We very much like what Sparks has been using with major deviations. This allows up to a 50% modification to a measurable development standard, like a setback or something like that. It requires public notification and a public process. We have that as a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission, much like a special use permit is today. But the finding is essentially one of no significant impact, not of a special circumstance. So what came up not too long ago in Sparks is someone was having a daycare center, and homeless folks were jumping the fence and sleeping in their playground, and it was causing a problem, and they weren't allowed to do more than a six-foot fence. They wanted an eight-foot fence. They were able to do that through a major deviation process. So that's what we see that being used for. And then the alternative equivalent compliance, I hate the name, but I guess it's commonly used. This is to allow proposals to modify non-measurable development standards, kind of design standards. Essentially, a designer could propose an alternative. The approval standard is basically as good or better, and it also would require a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission. I understand this process is being increasingly utilized around the country to allow design creativity and have a process that's open in public to, basically, a path to approval, if it's a good thing. Two more findings, kind of a restructuring of findings, as discussed before. So the findings are more applicable to the requests being proposed. And some criteria for planned unit developments. Standard expiration dates and phasing criteria, the fiscal analysis requirements, and some increased allowances for minor modifications without having to do a full PUD amendment. I should also mention the SPD. We discussed that during the issue sheets, the specific plan districts, and the legal constraints about having SPD districts. There were some law changes, and our legal staff confirmed a comfort level based on the new NRS requirements that we can essentially continue to do specific plan districts. So that will, that will be featured. So that's it for the document. It's a lot, but it's only an inch and a half. So at least it's not three and a half inches. Just in closing, public input opportunities. Here's the process we're at. Essentially, we're hoping to get review input and some actions from planning commission and council on this initial draft. We may bump those bars back into early February, but basically by late January, early February, we'll go into a redrafting process, a consolidated draft around the beginning of April. We plan to do another round of mailed public notifications that would also include notification of potential zone changes in the mixed-use districts in particular. Those consolidated districts were notifying map amendments. Essentially, go through this process again, hopefully more in a targeted way with refinements, and then do one more round of revisions to get to an adoption draft. So numerous opportunities for public input, for planning commission review. If anyone's here in the audience today or listening at home, we're very much inviting input. This is what we want right now. We want to hear from you so we can address your interests and concerns earlier and not have, you know, 200 people down at the adoption hearing saying you weren't listening to me. So if anyone's listening, now is the perfect opportunity to weigh in on what you'd like to see in Reno's development code. You can do that. We have open houses and events. I think our next two are in mid-December here, coming up in a couple weeks. I can't remember the dates. But those are more informational. A lot of people don't want to really give input in kind of a public back-and-forth debate type process. Please feel free to just email us, stop by our office, give us a call. We have a dedicated email line. We're documenting all input in a big, massive spreadsheet. We'll respond to questions. Stop by our office, give me a call, whatever it may be. And again, reno.gov/zzoning is where you can find information. I'm done. Thank you for listening. Again, I wanted to have a little discussion on the process you'd like to use moving forward. I know your regular agenda is starting here. I went a little longer than 40 minutes. Open it up to maybe not substantive questions, but process questions or discussion. Thank you.
Mr., does anyone have any follow-up questions for Arlo? Mr. Marshall?
Arlo, I think it would be great for particularly things like residential adjacency, the major-minor SUP division lines and kind of deviation and variances, and maybe even the findings. I don't know about that one, per se, but maybe you could use some examples from our past. You know, this would fall in, this project would have fallen out, this one would have, you know, continued to be an SUP. So a little more, some concrete examples.
That's what we plan to do in January, is we kind of dive into each of these.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr., is there anything else? I guess one question I would throw out there as we're moving forward is, obviously, we've just spent 45 minutes or so with the presentation. None of us have had any questions, comments, anything else, and I think that kind of points out the amount of information that's in here. I myself have some concerns about trying to roll in a substantive review of this as a part of, a portion of an existing agenda. So I would, I guess, from my standpoint, favor doing something like this as a workshop or something separate from our standard planning commission meetings. Obviously, that's an additional commitment for both staff and for us. So before we give that direction, I'd just like to have a little bit of comment from our end as to, especially the one in January where we're looking at all three modules prior to, you know, moving forward, if there is any interest in doing that either as a separate meeting or substantially more time added to an existing meeting date. So I know I would be welcoming either multiple hours prior to our standard meeting or even more importantly, maybe a separate date for that. So is there any thought from commissioners, one way or the other, as far as that goes?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gower?
Thank you. You know, we did that, went through that process with the master plan update where we had a series of workshops, and I thought that was a valuable process to sit down. You know, it's an open meeting, but more, a little bit more of an informal setting. I think we did it upstairs in the caucus room, and, you know, we rolled up our sleeves and we looked at the modules one by one. We could go through and look at the articles, you know, piece by piece, and provide Arlo and his staff with that targeted feedback. I would be in favor of that process.
Hey, Commissioner. Well, a couple of us have weighed in on that. I guess what I would say, Arlo, Commissioner Marshall?
I was going to say, I agree with what the suggestions are. So if you need another affirmative expression of opinion, then please take that as support.
Appreciate that. So I guess if we're looking to get per the line there, and I'm a little concerned that the planning commission bar is dashed and the city council bar is solid, I'd rather that be the other way around. I think we're a little more, anyway. If you want that to happen prior to the city council, I think, let's look at some scheduling both on their end and our end and see coming up. Obviously, it's not going to happen in the month of December, but if, January, between our standard meetings and other meeting dates, if you can look to give us some suggestions, maybe we can speak about that either at our next meeting or some discussion with that.
Maybe we can coordinate with you offline on some scheduling options and poll availability. We were thinking, you know, we want New Year's to pass, holiday period to pass, so maybe the second week of January, something like that. I'd also like to schedule it ends to assume we're not going to finish everything in one day, to go through stuff. I'm sure we're going to have a list of additional things requiring additional discussion, and maybe we'd have, you know, a longer workshop, and then maybe a couple hours at your follow-up meetings or whatever that looks like, if it's okay with the group. Maybe we can coordinate with the chair on what that looks like.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Thank you so much for your time tonight. I know zoning codes can be boring, but I think you all know how important they are. So it's a lot here. Hopefully, you like a lot of what you see. I'm sure there's stuff that's going to need to be changed, and I'm sure there'll be, hopefully, as many agreements as we can reach, and there'll be a few points of disagreement, and we'll move through those and ultimately do what the most want to do.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arlo. Appreciate it. Okay. With that, we will move on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting. We're going to start with item 6.1, which is case number LDC 20-00023, the Innovation Drive Zone Change. We will start with a presentation from the applicant, applicant's representative.
Taking this way down. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Karen Downs. I'm with Manhard Consulting, here to represent this Innovation Drive Zone Change. It's from industrial, commercial, to general office proposal. The location is at the southwest corner of Double R Boulevard and Innovation Drive. It's just, anyway, you can see the parcel is highlighted in yellow.
Karen, you can use the mouse as a pointer.
What was that?
You can use the mouse as a pointer.
Okay, thank you. Here we see it's, this is a 1.5-acre parcel, and it's a portion of Reno Corporate Center, which is a mix of professional office, business, and medical uses. Over time, it's transitioned into, you know, more focus of medical campus and business campus uses in this vicinity. And we'll see... And we'll see in a recent slide, this future hospital site. Right here, this future hospital site too, just shows the change in the area into a medical use area. The existing master plan of this parcel is mixed employment as well as the area around it. This parcel here is, has been approved. I think it's going through some, according to staff, going through some recording process, but has been approved to be public, quasi-public, and is that hospital site that we were talking about, that I'm sure you guys went through numerous discussions. Here's the parcel with the existing zoning of industrial commercial. And as you'll see around it in the area, there's been a change in this area up through here to the general office. That blue color is general office zoning designation as well as the PUD that was approved here on-site for the hospital use. So in our project description, we're requesting a zoning map amendment from industrial commercial to general office. It's for that one and a half acre parcel in the 150-acre Reno Corporate Center. And the goal of requesting this is to allow for a flexibility of uses, allow for more office-type uses in the area and including medical uses, as the shift in the area has shown over year, over the years. The current industrial commercial designation is primarily industrial uses, allows for some office where the general office that's been requested is general office, but also allows medical facilities. Right now, there's no specific development proposed on-site. They would just like the opportunity to be able to market the site for more flexible uses, including general office and the medical uses as in that general vicinity for the Reno Corporate Center. This shows, the proposed zoning, it just shows that light blue color for the general office that is compatible with the surrounding GO zoning and that PUD for the hospital. We feel this request is logical, given the recent change in the master plan to mixed employment from industrial. That mixed employment master plan allow, allows for concentrated uses of employment and supporting uses such as small-scale commercial and office. It's consistent with that mixed employment master plan designation and further implements it. The Reno Corporate Center, the 150-acre Reno Corporate Center, has been, already been developed with those compatible uses, professional office, medical, and business campus uses. The zone change will just allow for more compatible uses in that corporate center. As I've mentioned, there's that corresponding shift in the area from nearby properties in the Reno Corporate Center as well as the hospital PUD. And this site, this parcel, the one and a half acre parcel, just is better suited to those GO uses. As with that, we feel that this is consistent with the mixed employment master plan, meets those findings, as well as the development factors that support the, the development factors in the surrounding area that support the zone change. It represents orderly development and is an appropriate use of the property. With that, I am, of course, happy to answer any questions that you have. And thank you.
Okay. We'll get a presentation from staff and then call you back with any questions. Anne Marie, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Anne Ray Lane for the record. As stated by the applicant's representative, this is a request for a zoning map amendment from industrial commercial to general office on a 1.5 acre parcel. This is not parallel. Driving me nuts. I think we're just gonna have to go with it. This property is located south of the approved Northern Nevada Sierra Medical Center PUD. And as part of the Reno Corporate Center, a master plan development that provides for a mix of professional, business, and medical uses. Staff has received no public comment in relation to this request. Two key points here is, one, that this rezon request is consistent with the policies and land use designations set out in the master plan, and two, this request has been found to be consistent with recent zoning trends in the area and not just with the surrounding uses. As such, staff is able to make all of the zoning map amendment findings and recommends approval of the request, and I am happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Great. Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Before I open it up for any public comment, I will ask commissioners for disclosures. I will start with Commissioner Marshall.
No disclosures for this zoning request.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site.
Commissioner Taylor, no disclosures.
Mr. Johnson, visited the site.
Commissioner Velto, no disclosures.
Mr. Hawkins, visited the site, spoke to the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Gower, visited the site.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, do we have any request-to-speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Is anyone in the audience wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And for those of you who are in the audience, if you do wish to make public comment on this or any other items, please see Michelle and fill out one of those orange-colored forms. So I'll bring it back to the commission for any questions, commissioners, comments. Mr. Gower?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Anne Marie, is it fair to say that overall the general office zoning designation is more restrictive on the allowed uses than IC? I don't know, it kind of depends on the uses, but I'm looking at the table and I'm seeing less that's allowed in a general office versus IC. It's really just that medical use.
It really does depend on the zoning or the use request. Anne Ray Lane for the record. For example, it's, it's more permissive in building height, which allows up to 55 feet, instead of IC, which restricts it to 40 feet. However, the PUD located north of it allows up to 75 feet. So I guess it depends on your, what you're looking as restrictive. As number of uses allowed, yes, it is less, but, but as the applicant's representative stated, more compatible with the medical office trend in that area.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
It does, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any additional questions? Comments or motion? Mr. Taylor?
I'm prepared to make a motion. In the matter of case number LDC 20-00023, Innovative Drive Zone Change, based on compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend the city council approve the zoning map amendment, zoning map amendment by ordinance, and I can make all the findings.
Hey, Commissioner, I have a motion. Looking for a second.
Mr. Hawkins, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I will move on to, next item on our agenda, case numbers, or item number 6.2, case number LDC 20-00022, Majestic Liberty Zone Change. And we will again start this off with a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Rohrmeyer for the record. I'm here on behalf of Tectonics Design Group and Majestic Realty, our client. We're here tonight presenting a zone change request for three vacant parcels in the North Valleys fronting North Virginia Street at the corner of Seneca and North Virginia. It's 35 acres. You can see the sites are undeveloped. I have some photos up there for you. I want to call out that the staff report mentioned the presence of the site being on the hydrologic features. This is not a major drainage way, in case there was a question. We did the analysis for that. This is what the site looks like in the immediate vicinity, but I want to point out there's been a lot of changes in the area towards more industrial development. We have the OnTrak project, there's the Panatoni Commerce Center, both to the west and to the north, and then further to the east is the Amazon site. But directly across the street is the Panatoni Commerce Center. I think this is a really strong fit with that. Our parcel is currently zoned, mixed use, North Virginia Street Transit Corridor, and warehouse is allowed in that use. But our request is really specifically to build a warehouse with slightly different building orientation, so requesting to go to the IC zone. We worked with staff to pick the IC zone based on kind of how it would fit in with the general area. And to our rear, we have railroad, a 200-foot railroad right-of-way. And then to our west, we have Washoe County, medium-density suburban. To our east, we have Washoe County, low-density suburban. But these parcels are not fully developed, as you can see in some of the photographs. They're sort of underutilized at this time. And we've been working with the neighbors. We've been to the NAB, but we intend to go back. Ooh, apologies, for some reason, that's on its side. We're not here tonight to present any site plans to you. I wanted to give you a sense that that is a work in progress, pending approval of a zone change. We would like to do two industrial buildings that are warehouse in nature, but we would be back for a special use permit unless, of course, the new code comes into play and then that requirement might change. So that remains to be seen. But really, like I said, we are here tonight because the current zoning is mixed use, North Virginia Street Todd Corridor, but we'd like to go to industrial commercial, which is a little bit more permissive, a little bit more exacting and identified in the master plan designation of mixed employment, which is on our site. So, thank you. I'm here for questions, as well as the developers here tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. We'll get a presentation from staff and let you know with questions. Kyle, good evening.
Good evening, Chair, Commission. Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner for the record. I have a brief, very brief, presentation for you as the applicant representative outlined. It's a zone change request from the current mixed-use NVTC zoning designation to IC or industrial commercial. Consists of three parcels. I gave you a little ortho-view close-up of the site. It's located on just south of North Virginia Street. You have Lemon Drive. I don't know if you can see that mouse very well, but I'm pointing to it. Lemon Drive there. Sted Boulevard, a little bit further to the north. During the recent master plan update, as you all know, and we've seen a barrage of these requests come through in the North Valleys along the North Virginia Corridor where the master plan designation is changed to industrial along a good portion of that. This particular piece is, was master plant, excuse me, master plan designated as mixed employment. The IC zoning designation is a conforming zone of that master plan designation. Here's a couple, just side-by-side comparison of what the area looks like right now as far as zoning. I can't pull that mouse down. So you'll, you'll see this kind of the surrounding area, as the applicant's representative noted. That blue line, it's, it's kind of faint, but you can see it. That's the city boundary. So you have a good portion surrounding the site on three sides. That's county and a good portion of its residential zoning. So any requests to develop this site, we'll, we'll have to come forward with a special use permit. Public comment received today. Staff received one call in support of the request from a neighbor and one call somewhat neutral, the request from a neighbor. It was presented in Ward for NAB in November. Comments were generally supportive, noted general compatibility of the, of the zoning with the area, but concern was raised regarding traffic impacts to 395, just overall impact. That's all I have for you. Staff was able to make all the applicable zoning map amendment findings and recommends the planning commission recommend city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance. And I'm here to take any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Before I open up for public comment, I'll once again ask for disclosures. This time, we'll start with Commissioner Gower.
Mr. Gower, familiar with the site?
Mr. Hawkins went by the site, spoke to the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Velto went by the site.
Mr. Johnson, no disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor went by the site, and I believe I received some emails from Kyle.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Thank you. I have one request-to-speak form on this item. Sam, and I apologize, I can't read your last name, so I'll let you go. You have three minutes. Now you can come up to the microphone. You'll have three minutes. Just state your name for the record as you begin, and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Sam Cozuth, and I just really came down here because, you know, they've been building up all along there. I live in Seneca Drive right there. I've lived there for about 25 years. I grew up in the valleys, and the quality of life is just going downhill out there. It used to take five, 10 minutes to get to work. Now it's an hour. And now they're building more out here, and they're building more over there. They're building everywhere with no infrastructure, you know, kept in mind. They let Amazon move in, but then they give them a tax break, and the roads are like this out there now. They just got redone. They're running all these heavy trucks. My kids are supposed to go to school. How are they supposed to drive between all these crazy trucks when they're learning to drive? I'm like an island of homes in a sea of industrial park now. And that's not what it used to be, not what it used to be at all. And it's just, it makes me sick. And that's why I wanted to come here and talk to you guys. And I know we've already got the warehouses out there now, but now what does this actually do if it becomes industrial commercial? Does that mean they're going to be bringing in tanker loads of chemicals and making all kinds of crazy stuff right down the road from my house? Is it going to be Texas? Is the building going to catch on fire and we're all going to have to leave? I mean, who's going to be responsible for that? And isn't the city council right now paying settlements to people in Lemon Valley for the lake getting full? That's, oh, they say that's not a major ditch. When it snows and rains and we get, you know, heavy snow, there'll be two to three feet of water rushing down that. So you've already taken the whole side of the mountain, all that natural drainage down there, and their excuse is every time they build this huge parking lot, they dig a hole, and they put a pipe out of it. Where does that pipe go? It goes to Lemon Valley Lake. So I think you guys are all opening yourselves up for litigation on that alone, and I don't know why we just keep, there's, and, oh, so we have a two-lane highway, but not in the state of Nevada. It's actually only one lane. The other lane is what they call a safety lane. You're not even supposed to travel in that lane unless you're passing, and you're supposed to pull over. So we have one lane of traffic, technically, and that's the law. And now, now we're going to add another, a whole bunch more houses, and they say, well, we need this mixed use because we need jobs for the people. Well, if you lived in my neighborhood, you can't afford a house if you work at that place, unless you, maybe you own the building. So I don't see it. And the people who own those buildings, they're not going to live in my neighborhood anymore because it's ugly. It's all a bunch of concrete and just big old built-up buildings. Maybe, maybe in 20 years, when the trees grow up and hide them, it'll actually look like something you'd want to live in. You know, you probably all live in town. I don't know how many of you have lived here your whole lives. I've been here since I was four years old. And progress, I think, this is not progress, is what I'm getting at, you know? Why do we have the world's biggest park out east of town? I drive out there all the time. I do mechanical stuff. I, I don't mind, you know, the warehousing and the construction, keeps, feeds my kids. But why is it right in my backyard? I can drive down the road to get there. Fernley's building that huge park out there. Why don't they move out there? Why don't they, you know, put some houses? And I can't believe they let them build all those houses out in Cold Springs. And I thought originally when they talked to us, oh, it's going to be like third acre lots. Now you're finding out that they're only putting fences on three sides of the property because the house, the one side of the house is going to be the property line? We're going to have another, I don't even, I mean, I can't even imagine how many more people I'm going to have to deal with, just getting in and out of town. And I think it's a major concern for just, for fire, for safety, and that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Sam. Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. Would you like to get us started? Mr. Marshall?
I didn't see it anywhere on the, any of the maps, and particularly the zone change map that you had up, but what is, what is the parcel across to the south, across the railroad tracks in Washoe County zoned as? So just on the other side, the south side of the parcel?
Sure. Thank you for the question. Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner for the record. Go back to that map. So that parcel you're referring to, I can't pull the mouse down that far, unfortunately, but down there, I think that's, is that the one you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah, it's low-density suburban. It's Washoe County zoned. There's a little, there's a patch of open space in there towards the, towards the rear, so it's kind of a mixed zone, split-zone parcel. This is the UP right-of-way. It's about a 200-foot-wide railroad right-of-way that is between the two sites.
And then, I don't know if this is a question for you or for the applicant, but if you can answer it, maybe we can move to the applicant. But I was interested in the building orientation statement, that the reason why they, you know, warehousing is allowed in... statement that the reason why they, you know, warehousing is allowed in mixed-use and in IC, but they need to go to IC to get the orient, something about the building orientation. I didn't track that. Can you?
Yeah, so the current mixed-use zoning requires the buildings to be placed on the front property line, so the buildings have to be oriented and all the parking has to be in the rear. So the applicant can clarify if she would, why they requested the change, but that's the code requirement difference. So whereas the IC zoning allows parking to be in front and the buildings to be set back.
And in general, the difference between mixed-use and industrial-commercial in terms of the uses that, additional uses that would be allowed, that would not otherwise be allowed within a mixed-use when we switch to industrial-commercial, forgetting about the warehouse use, but can you give a quick sketch of the types and intensities of those uses that if we switch to IC, what would be added to the uses?
Yeah, there was a land use table that I provided in the staff report. I can kind of, so are you referring to more industrial-type uses? Because there's a long list of uses, but as far as industrial-type uses...
The key differences between the mixed-use and the IC.
Yeah, so some more, the more heavy industrial-type of uses, so the mixed, current mixed-use zone allows for a lot of the industrial-type of uses that the proposed IC zoning district allows for. The heavier, I guess you refer to them as a heavier industrial-type use or a more intense use. The more intensive uses, most of them require a special use permit. I don't know. Sorry for my delay. I'm just trying to look at, look at the comparisons here, but...
Trying to get you to do my work.
Give me a sec. So as far as industrial uses go, the IC, the IC zone allows for uses such as chemical processing, so with a, with a special use permit, whereas the mixed-use zone doesn't allow for that at all. So that would be one example of a use that is allowed with, with the, with the proposed zoning that would not be allowed at all with the... Planning manager shaking her head, but...
No, sorry, Angela Fu's planning manager. Just to clarify, under the North Virginia Transit Corridor, the chemical processing would require a special use permit.
But it would be an example of a more intense industrial use that would be allowed with the special use permit if we did the rezone.
They are the same. In particular, the chemical processing, both zoning districts require a special use permit.
Well, they both would allow it. What I'm trying to...
Through a special use permit.
Right. What I'm trying to get is not so much whether it's special use or allowed or whatever, the permitting level, but are, you know, we're seeking to, the applicant is requesting his own change to obtain a different orientation, but by doing so, we would be allowing additional uses that aren't in the mixed-use that would be in the IC zone. And I'm just trying to get a feel for what those additional uses would be, if any. So that's...
There's, there's several of them, but one that I'm seeing right here that I'm able to compare is, for example, mining, sand and gravel excavation. That requires a special use permit in the current zoning, whereas that, it is not allowed at all in the, in the IC zoning. So that would be one, that's, that's a difference. Lot of pages here to look through, so I'm, I'm sorry for the, I don't have all those listed off the top of my head.
Okay, why don't, you know, if there's other commissioners have questions, we can...
Yeah, I can look while...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe just to expand on that again, one of the bigger differences with the IC zoning that is geared more, more towards industrial-type uses. With that mixed-use zoning, it provides for more residential-type uses, commercial-type uses, so the, the mixed-use provides for a broader range of uses outside of just industrial.
Is it fair to say that there, there's not an expansion of the types of uses?
Correct. That this, this zone change will actually reduce the types of uses that are allowed.
So if there was a concern about, you know, we've got residential development potential, you know, real or potential on three sides, and we're shifting from a mixed-use to an industrial, that we're not allowing any additional intensification of industrial use that would otherwise, that could otherwise happen under the mixed-use?
That's correct. Generally speaking, the types of industrial uses that are currently allowed will be the same types of industrial uses in the new zoning. The intensity in terms of industrial-type uses is generally the same.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Kyle, if this goes through tonight, what are we facing as far as special use permit as well as residential adjacency? Or are we going to be out of conformance?
So if, if the zoning change doesn't go through, for example, the zoning itself will be out of, it will remain out of conformance with the current master plan. So the current master plan designation is not conforming to the, to this zone, so, or to the current zoning. So the IC zone is one of the zoning designations that would be conforming. So from that standpoint, so the, as, as the applicant's representative mentioned, it's, it's currently vacant, so it's not, from a development standard standpoint, it's not out of conformance in any way right now. But for, for special use permits, as I mentioned previously, it would require a special use permit for residential adjacency for any type of non-residential development on the site. It's been identified that, that is not a major drainage way that runs through that site, carrying at least 100 acres of drainage or more. Additionally, if the applicant were to come through for one of the uses listed in these land use tables that required a special use permit for the use itself, then there would be a use, a use permit triggered for that as well. So basically, possibly the use, if it's, if it requires a special use permit, and for non-residential, it will definitely require a special use permit.
Thank you.
Kyle, let me just piggyback on that question, just to make sure I understand. So the residential adjacency for non-residential development and the requirement for a special use permit for that would occur regardless of whether this zone change is pushed through?
Correct.
Okay, so what we're looking at tonight, from a zone change standpoint, would not change the future development requirements, the future review requirements for development on that site?
Correct. And actually, the current mixed-use designation exempts residential adjacency from special use permit requirements. So the current designation actually exempts a residential adjacency SUP. So if they came through with a permitted use such as a warehouse, there's no trigger for a special use permit.
Okay.
How it currently is zoned. With the IC zoning, it's no longer exempt.
It's a requirement.
It's a requirement.
Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to confirm once again, Kyle, the IC zoning that the applicant is requesting confirms, conforms with the new master plan.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, additional questions? Comments or discussion? Commissioner Velto?
I just want to say I appreciated Commissioner Marshall and Commissioner Hawkins' line of questioning. I think the explanation of mixed-use versus industrial-commercial kind of addressed some of the gentleman's concerns. She spoke in opposition that there would still be a special use permit required for certain types of development, so seems less intrusive of a project than it's currently zoned for, or the zoning change doesn't seem as dramatic as I would have thought from the outset.
Thank you, Commissioner. Additional comments? Or a motion? Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the matter of case number LDC 2000022, majestic liberty zone change, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance, and I can make all the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner. Have a motion?
Mr. Hawkins, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional comments?
If I might, two things. One, I'm, I'm worried that the industrial, the change to industrial-commercial is, is one of those in which we are potentially intensifying what would otherwise not be an allowed use. However, our planning manager has represented to us that it would not result in intensification of industrial uses that, because they're already allowed within the IC, excuse me, the mixed-use with the overlay of the corridor. So I'm basing, basing, I think what I'll do on, on that representation. This, this parcel, to me, has some difficulty associated with it because it's surrounded, except for that, the north side, by either existing residential or potential residential, and it's also within the county. So the individuals that we are most directly affecting are going to be county residents who don't have a direct vote on the decision-maker here, which is the city. And so the reason why this is being done apparently is just for building orientation, but the consequences obviously is that we are allowing additional uses, potentially, which I, you know. And the question, I guess, is, is there, you know, and just from looking at the orientation of the building in terms of compatibility with the, with the site, I'd rather have the building up front and the parking in the back associated with the, with the, with the neighborhood, but I'm not certain that's for me to decide. So I guess I'm, I'm waffling around, hoping that I can find a way to support it, but those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marshall. I was going to comment on this as well, and to look at your concerns. I did go through, and I think I appreciated Kyle's final comment on that in the sense that there's a number of uses that, when I look at the table and was doing it while you were doing the line of questioning, most of the, the uses that you were speaking about are permitted for both of them, and literally permitted. So the only reason they would be coming back to us for something such as a, you know, chemical processing facility, the only reason that would come back to us is due to residential adjacency. And what Kyle is saying is, under the current zoning, because it's permitted and there's no requirement for residential adjacency, that whole project could go through without another public hearing. Whereas under this zone change, the residential adjacency becomes a requirement regardless of what the use is, whether it's permitted or not, because of the residential adjacency. And to your concern about it being Washoe County, I had the same thought, and that is how I'm actually feeling more comfortable with this zone change, is that we are requiring them to come back with basically any development on that site for us to review and for the, the adjacent property owners to have a say in that. And so even if they wanted to come back with a forward, you know, located building, to your point, once we change the zoning, they would be required to come to us with that even though it was permitted under the previous one. So I like the idea of changing the zoning because it does give us an opportunity to see whatever is going to be provided there, even if we are losing the opportunity for some uses such as commercial uses or some other things that the mixed-use was originally intended for. I think we've seen a trend going this direction for these larger industrial spaces. That's what the master plan is directing us towards. So if we have an opportunity to create a situation where we have to have additional review upon it, I like that. So based on that, that's how I'm, I'm looking at this zone change. So hopefully that comment at least answers where I'm coming from on this. Any additional comments before I ask for a vote? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to city council. Okay. Kyle, I would just make a request before you leave. If you can touch base with the gentleman from Washoe County that's an adjacent property owner, just to give him an idea of what the next steps would be on anything for this parcel. I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, item 6.3, case number LDC 20-00025, the LIV plus master plan and zoning map amendments. Start with a presentation from the applicant's representative.
Good evening. Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group on behalf of the applicant. So, sorry, this is a master plan and zone change request. This is two parcels adjacent to Wells Avenue. That's Wells Avenue at the lower right corner of the, of the screen. So the goal of the request is to construct student housing ultimately, so the applicant will be coming back with a request. The site triggers a special use permit essentially no matter what you do, due to the ore ditch runs across the property that counts as a major drainage way. It'll trigger a special use permit. So we'll be back for a special use permit regardless of what the ultimate project is, but right now it's to construct student housing, comparable to what's already installed on parcels to the west of this site. Additionally, as, as you'll see in a second, this will bring the master plan and zoning into greater conformance. The master plan request is to change part of the property from open space to residential, as I'll detail in a minute. This is not a standard open space. It's not public open space. And then change the zoning from what is essentially an old remnant, old city plan, old UNRC mixed-use zoning categories to MF30, and ultimately allow infill close to the university. So the parcels outlined in red, that's two parcels, three master plan designations. This is the current reimagined Reno master plan. So the, the SMU, the suburban mixed-use, we can apply MF30 to that designation, so we don't need to change that. It's the, it's the single-family and the PGOS Parks Greenway open space that we'll be ultimately changing here. And what we'll be requesting the change to is to that brown, to the MF, the multifamily designation that's in place just to the, to the west of our site. So that would be the after condition. You see a little cut out of the eastern border of this, of that property that's being changed. That's a piece that has, has been in use by the Reno Rendering Plant that, that operates just to the east of the site, and we're going to do a boundary line adjustment and assign that piece to them. So that will, will stay with, that will be separated from this project. You'll notice along the northern property line, there's a strip of green that remains. That's the ore ditch, and so we'll leave that as open space. So here's, I have to warn you, I always do my best to keep these presentations simple. In this case, that is just not going to be possible. So I'll just do my best to get through this, and when people have questions, I'll, I'll address them. But one of the wrinkles here is that there is a potential for the city of Reno to initiate a master plan revision on, I'm going to go back a slide, to that green, that PGOS green to the west of our site. There's, there's some potential for the city to initiate a master plan amendment to turn that to, to multifamily neighborhood, the same as we're requesting. So I feel that our project is compatible with the area without that change, but it would be more compatible, I suppose, if the city did initiate that change. And the reason for that is, we'll come up in a second, well, so naturally there is some master plan history here. As I mentioned, the site has never been public open space. It's never been a public park. It's been private, private pasture land for the most part. The OS designation is essentially a remnant from an old University of Reno plan and from the ore ditch, and, and there was a sort of a broad green swath that, that cut across a bunch of properties, and that's slowly been going away. of properties, and that's slowly been going away. In fact, the university has essentially abandoned that open space plan, and the city's master plan has, no longer identifies that as an active thing. And you'll see those parcels to the west of the project site, and I wish I had a pointer here, but there's...
It'll work if you can pull it out from the foliage behind you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, so these parcels here, for those of you with long memories, I did some work on that site, I think, two years ago. That used to be green, and we came in with a comparable request to remove that green for the same justifications I'm offering tonight, that it wasn't functional public open space, and we got that changed. So we're pursuing a similar course tonight. Our request pursues a similar course. In the interim, the new master plan has some changes, so we aren't able to do what we did on that site, where we changed the UNRC underlying plan, and we kept the MU zone. That's no longer an option. So that's why we're ultimately going to be requesting the MF30. But the point here is that the property has been moving in the direction of the request that we're making tonight. And we were told, at the time of that earlier work, that two-year ago work, discussions with planning staff and with former planning manager, identified that green strip, the open space strip, as essentially an oversight that could have been cleaned up when the ore ditch was piped and when the university plan was retired. So our work on these parcels to the west was viewed somewhat as a cleanup at the time. So I think that this property is similarly positioned. So here's the current zoning, and if I get you this wrong, I'll be happy to have clarification from planning staff, and I have to point out that Sienna has worked very hard on helping me work through this. So this is the current zoning, and this is, there's going to be two levels of zoning, two zoning exhibits on this. So here's the green we're requesting to get rid of, and here's the work that was done earlier, where we did get rid of it, but notice that we kept the open space strip for the ore ditch, and then there's a small water course through here that could also be retained. So there's the MF30 request. That's the after condition. Again, we would be happy to keep the current MU zoning that's in place, but that's no longer an option. That's not an active zoning designation by the City of Reno. So we're asking for the MF30 zone. It's important to point out that the request to change to MF30 is a downzone. MU is the most permissive zoning district the city's ever had, and by putting MF30 on there, we would be adding a height limitation that currently isn't there, as well as a unit cap. And then that's the after condition with the MU. And then the city will be independently reviewing the MU zone, and I think scheduling their own revisions to that. So in my opinion, we're adding conformance here to the long-range plans of the city. You'll note here that green strip remains along the top. The ore ditch, this relates to the university plan. I did some research with Google Earth photos and was able to establish that the ore ditch and that there was a green channel, the open space channel, across the university and the adjoining site. And over the decades, it was steadily piped and covered up, and I think that's what led the university to abandon that plan. It effectively didn't exist anymore, and in fact, this picture's out today. There are buildings on some of these sites now. So our property here, where the project is, is really the last stretch of the open ditch there. We're going to, we don't need to disserve that ditch. We'll leave it open with any project we do. But the point is that that open space corridor effectively doesn't exist. Had quite a bit of public outreach on this. There's the master plan amendment zone change portion. We had a neighborhood meeting for the master plan element required by state law, held that at Trainer Middle School. I think there were 13 people that attended. I think that, you know, people naturally have concerns about open space going away, but I think there was some recognition from the neighborhood that there's some right to develop private property, and I think they were largely accepting of that, certainly with some questions about traffic and ultimately what we're going to build. Sorry, I stalled for a second there. At that meeting, I also was able to establish that, in the opinion of some of the neighbors that are living on Winston Avenue, that some of the student housing that's there now seems to function well, is well-managed. Our project would be comparable to that and would have similar management functions. Neighborhood Advisory Board, again, I felt that went pretty smoothly. I had a brief conversation with Commissioner Hawkins after that meeting. He asked about the Rendering Plant. I'll address that in a second. Planning Commission hearing, we've got a City Council hearing coming up, regional conformance review, council adoption, and then subsequently a special use permit. So there's plenty of opportunities for the public to be involved in this. We're certainly not going to be flying under the radar in any way. And here's the ultimate project goal. This is our project site over here and here, and that's the student housing that exists now. Our project would be roughly comparable to that. That's the goal. It's, the site is, I'd say generously sized enough that we can maintain separation from both the north and south houses. There's some grade separation in here, so the buildings sit lower than these houses behind them, so I think we can kind of tuck in below their view line for the most part. This property over here is the Reno Rendering Plant. Manager and owner of that plant are here tonight. I've had some discussion with them. I feel it's been a productive discussion, and we're going to continue to work with them. But Commissioner Hawkins got me motivated to get in touch with them, where he had a question about, are they, is it actively, you know, rendering animals at this stage? The answer is no. It's a transfer station for animals that are going to be processed elsewhere. I don't want to say too much about that because the manager's here, and he can address that far better than I can. But we recognize it's there, and we're going to work with them, and if they feel it's necessary to disclose to residents that that plan exists and it's not leaving, that's fine with us. We're happy to do it. And I think that's all that I have. I recognize that was, that's a complicated zoning situation, so if people need clarification, I'm happy to handle that. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. I'll call you back up. Sienna, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, for the record, Sienna Reed. Derek gave you a really thorough overview of the request and did a good job kind of walking through all of the various changes that are a little bit complicated on this particular request. There are a couple of things I do want to highlight, though. Derek did touch on the fact that the requested zoning is more restrictive, MF30, or excuse me, mixed use within the UNR Regional Center and the residential portion compared to the MF30 zone. He touched on height restrictions. Currently, the MU has none. MF30 would be 45 feet in height. And then certainly, density restrictions. MU has none. We do have the 30 dwelling units per acre under MF30, and there are a variety of uses that are different in the MF30 zone. There are a range of residential uses that are allowed, but most of them, when you get to a certain unit count, require a site plan review or a special use permit. With the mixed-use zone, that is not the case. Most of them are going straightforward to building permit. The number of commercial uses are also significantly reduced in the proposed MF30 zoning. And so definitely did want to highlight that from just an overall neighborhood compatibility perspective. We do have single-family homes, and Michelle, maybe I could get the overhead. Both to the north and south of the site. In addition, certainly Derek did touch on the fact that you do have Reno Rendering adjacent to the amendment site. In addition to kind of neighborhood outreach and discussing the proposal with Reno Rendering, I went ahead and did a pretty thorough search of our database records in terms of what do we have on file in terms of code enforcement complaints, and really was only able to find one from 2015, and it did relate to odors. And that was taken care of, closed out, and there hasn't been anything since. We do have code that regulates odors, so in terms of a certain quantity or volume crossing a property line, we do have code in place that helps to protect odors moving across properties. So just wanted to highlight that that is in place, and certainly, we know that there's discretionary review that would come forward on the site for a project in the future. And so there are a variety of potential mitigating features that could be added into the project design, whether that be building orientation, landscape buffers, enhanced setbacks, you know, general window design in terms of windows that don't open disclosures to renters. That's something we often will require in terms of, you know, let's make sure the folks that are moving into these properties know that there is an existing non-conforming use. So did want to highlight, those are some of the things that could potentially be seen on a project if the zone change is approved. Did also just want to highlight very quickly, our master plan policies do support the protection of natural features. On this particular site, the ore ditch is really the main natural feature. It is protected at the open space zoning district as explained, and you do have Board Four comments that were sent directly to you. They were received after preparation of the staff report, so did want to note that those have general support for the request. And then also Derek went into detail in the neighborhood meeting. There were a good number of folks that showed up, and they had a lot of really good questions, really looking towards project design, which is fairly typical, but did want to get into those details around, well, what does this zone change mean in conjunction with the master plan amendment also, but, you know, what does it mean in terms of the types of development and how high it can be in the future? So with that, I'll conclude and certainly happy to answer any questions you might have at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Sienna. Before I open up for public comment, I'll once again ask commissioners for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Levis, or excuse me, Commissioner Marshall. Sorry, you guys switched positions.
No, it's downgrade.
No, now you get to start.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site.
Commissioner Taylor, I'm familiar with the site and received an email.
Commissioner Johnson received the email and visited the site?
Commissioner Velto received an email.
Mr. Hawkins, all of it, emails, talked with the applicant representative, visited the site.
Commissioner Gauri received the emails. Hey, thank you. I have a couple of request-to-speak forms on this item. Start with Bob Koschel. You want me to switch that to Andy? Okay, Andy. Andy Black.
I'm Andy Black. I'm the general manager of Reno Rendering Company, and I'll wait for you to get the handout. There will be a test on this later, so make sure you read everything.
That's not a good way to start your public comment.
So in all seriousness, I want to make sure that, you know, I'm not taking an adversarial stance on this, it's purely educational. One, on what we do in rendering, and two, you know, our overall concerns with what's happening next to us. Rendering, if you don't know already, it's pure recycling, and it's green before green was cool. Rendering's been around since Jesus, and it's recycling oils and animal byproducts. At the plant, currently, we recycle, in terms of liquid waste, it's about 60,000 gallons plus or minus a day. And solid waste, it's about 120,000 to 130,000 pounds per week that we recycle. To the gentleman's point, yes, we, in terms of the animal byproducts, we don't recycle it at the plant. It is a transfer station that goes to our main plant down in Sacramento. So again, the importance of rendering, it's as important as sewer is to the community. Without rendering, your landfills would be filled, you know, immediately. There's methane gas issues and carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide issues and whatnot. So, yeah, rendering, and in terms of, again, so it's important. Reno Rendering's been there for 100 years. I work, you know, for the company right, I work for now, they bought it, they've had it since 1973, but again, you know, January 1, it'll be there 100 years, and it services the community that long. So again, it's all about recycling. You can read the handout and whatnot, but it's not, it's not just, it's critical. It's important to every community in this country. The product, the project, and we just found out like two days ago that this is happening, so we saw this on the, it was on the fence post, and so I, of course, ran down to the county and met Sienna and whatnot, so we kind of scrambled here. I got to be honest, though, and I want everyone to go in with open eyes, that in terms of odors and unsightful, I mean, we're dealing with, I got to be honest, dead animals. So, you know, it's dead cows. We have contracts with DOT, with the county. Daily, you know, there's going to be piles of fat and bone, and we call ofo, which is guts and dead animals, so very unsightly. And if we have students on each side, if you can imagine the concern that we have. The odors, we are in a community, and over the 100 years, it's the encroachment of housing, right? And so we try to mitigate the best we can, and we try to be good neighbors. Sorry, do I have a limit?
Yes. We have three minutes, but I'll let you wrap up.
Oh, okay, I'll wrap up. And in any case, the odors is a big deal, and as, you know, what happens in rendering plants happens to landfills or, you know, noise with airports, the encroachment of housing pushes them out, and that's just what we see happening. And, you know, I can only mitigate so much with odor control equipment, but if I have housing on every side of me, you know, it's quite overwhelming, and that is a concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, it's Bob Koschel.
How are y'all? I'm Bob Koschel. I've been involved with the rendering business here for the last 12, 14 years with Reno Rendering, and really the thing that disappointed me the most is nobody ever came to us. Nobody ever invited us to a meeting or told us about the meetings, and it's real funny that where you put the yellow sign up telling about what's going on there, there's been a car abandoned right in front of that sign since the sign went up. We saw it somewhere else. But we, we've been here for, like you said, there's been a rendering plant for 100 years. We don't do a lot of rendering here. We take it into our big plant we have in Sacramento, and if not, then like he said, the majority of this will end up in the waste, infill projects, and it's stuff that you don't really want in the infill. But we would like to work with them to see if there's something we can do, but there's several dead horses, cows, chickens, and stuff laying out in the yard from time to time. And notice in the university, they've moved a lot of the development from this end of the university to the southern end of the university to make it more of a city project. And so they've abandoned a lot of that, and we just want to work with them, and we're not trying to kill this project or anything, but we do feel that there's some things that really need to be looked at and studied before you have planned to build apartment complexes right next to us. Thank you very much. Any questions?
We'll have some discussion.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the commission for questions. Who'd like to get us started? Don't all speak at once. Questions? Commissioner Taylor?
Okay, I'll start. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem.
I'm just curious how a project like this is next to a project or a facility like that. Is the facility there by right, or how, can I have the history? Is it the landowners? How does that work? This is new to me.
Sounds good. For the record, Sienna Reed. So what we have in place with the Reno Rendering, they're considered an animal and animal byproduct processing use. And so they established, as was testified many years ago, about 100 years ago, and so they're an existing non-conforming use. That's the technical term for them in terms of our zoning code. And so the way non-conformities work is that they can continue to be located in the same location, provided they basically continue in operation. If they were to cease, they could come back and ask for a special use permit to reestablish. But if the site were vacant today, we wouldn't allow an animal and animal byproduct processing use to establish in this particular location. It's just not allowed per the zoning code. So it's a general kind of... It's just not allowed per the zoning code. So it's a general kind of longstanding treatment of non-conforming uses. It's very typical to have this treatment in zoning codes. And so we regulate them similarly to other cities where they can continue on, they're grandfathered in, you'll hear that term. If they propose significant expansions, that also requires special use permit approval because, again, the idea is that the use isn't necessarily compatible with the zoning district. It doesn't fit within that collection of uses that are deemed compatible with each other within that zone. Along those lines, is the student housing a compatible use? The student housing, per zoning code, we actually consider as multifamily. And that is a use that is allowed in the zoning districts that are in place today in terms of that mixed-use, University of Nevada Regional Center residential area. And just to kind of give you a map of where that is today. So everything in Tan is basically that mixed-use UNR residential area. And so, as you can see, multifamily is allowed throughout. And there are a variety of other uses that are allowed in that zoning district. And based on kind of the concept behind zoning, they have been evaluated and deemed to be compatible with each other and desirable for that particular area. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, additional questions? Commissioner Velto?
I just want to make a statement. I think we're in the area of grandfathered in for the past 100 years. That's the way I'm looking at it.
Commissioner Velto?
Could you go back to the previous map? So the rendering facility is kind of on the, to the right of the second square grid?
Yeah, so the rendering facility is in operation on this particular area. There was a reference to a boundary line adjustment to kind of carve out a little bit of additional area where they currently operate. So that's what this jog in site area is there for.
So then there's a house there just below that, right? Maybe, there's a couple houses just to the south of that red box?
I think these are more outbuildings and
To the left of that?
Trailers. Yeah. When I was able to take a look, they look like basically semi-trailers.
Oh, to the right of that, to the left of that, though? Or I guess, yeah, that way.
So these are existing single-family homes.
Have there been complaints from them about the rendering facility?
When I was searching our, basically our records database, I didn't see any code complaints from these particular homes. The one code complaint that was in our system was from the multifamily property to the north.
Okay. I guess I'm trying to figure out, because there's some of those houses that seem closer to the rendering facility than even some of the potential development would be. So I'm trying to figure out, I guess, how often are there complaints? Is the smell as strong as, as they're kind of alluding to?
Yeah. So you're absolutely correct. Some of the existing single-family homes probably are in closer proximity than potentially a project on the site would be, especially if, you know, there are enhanced setbacks that would potentially be proposed. And we do not have any records on file from the city's perspective of those complaints on the odors. And as I previously mentioned, we do have basically, you know, code that regulates odors. So it would be enforceable today, you know, if those single-family homes were impacted and there was shown to be odors that exceeded the quantity or volume that were allowed, that is an actionable item that could be enforced on. And we don't have any record of that occurring. I don't have, you know, a full background history in terms of Reno Rendering and their operations, and maybe discussions they've had with property owners over the years. I would defer to them if you have additional questions on just kind of their general experience with the neighborhood, but can definitely speak to our records in terms of just that one code enforcement complaint.
One quick last question, real quick. And I was just curious, is there, is there anything that's, I guess, dangerous about being proximate to the facility? Or is it more just kind of a annoyance?
My understanding is that the main nuisance would be odor associated with those operations.
Sienna, before you sit down, I'm just going to follow up. So, and Derek mentioned in his presentation, and I see here in the staff report that with, if the zone change and master plan amendment goes through, I noticed specifically, it talks about any non-residential development requires a special use permit. But what about if it is indeed a multifamily development, student housing has been proposed? Is that automatically going to come forward for a special use permit? Or is there a trigger for the special use permit on that?
Yeah, there absolutely is a trigger. So we're multifamily to be the proposed use that a project comes forward under. If the unit count exceeds four, then it would go to a site plan review process, which is discretionary, but approved by the administrator, excuse me, with appeal all the way up through our hearing officer and city council. If the unit count for multifamily goes over 50, then it's a special use permit that would come, you know, to this board for consideration. Similarly, even if it's single-family attached, which is going to require a tentative map over four units, but there's also an SUP trigger for 50 units for single-family attached. Really, the only residential use that you might see come forward, just by right, would be single-family detached of four units or less that they could take through a parcel map process. And it's, that is certainly something that they could do under the proposed zoning. It's not what the applicant has stated their desired intent is.
Okay. And so then, obviously, a lot of the concerns that are coming up, and I think you mentioned some of them in your presentation, but I just want to make sure I heard everything right. Under the scenario where it does come back before this body, or even as a site plan review, things can be conditioned on that with respect to, as you say, standoff distances, types of window orientation placement. And I guess, as a part of that process, and maybe this is as much for Derek as anything else, you obviously have a challenge with a neighbor. Under that scenario, I suspect that there will be some requirements that need to be maintained on the design side that you would be looking at and coordinating potentially with that land use as a result of the need for a special use permit. I guess I've transitioned to a question for Derek. Sorry, Sienna. So Derek, you've done a number of special use permits before in the past. Knowing as you have, you've already acknowledged a need for a change in the boundary, project boundary, because of what's going on. As a part of that process, you would be looking to react to the facility that's next door with the development of that, and would be open to conditions that would be placed upon the project as a result of compatibility with an existing non-conforming use?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I like Sienna's idea of windows that don't open. But sure, absolutely, there are, there are design, there are plenty of design issues we're happy to look at. I think that makes sense. It's, prior to this meeting out in the hallway with the manager and Mr. Kachel, I committed to having a meeting with them when we have a site plan together, and then we'll sit down and work it out. If you indulge me for one second, I have to confess that I did make a mistake. And because of that boundary line adjustment, I let myself believe that the owner of this property was communicating completely with the rendering plant. And it turns out that was a poor assumption on my part, and I should have knocked on their door a lot sooner. So I thought they were fully informed, and I found out recently that they weren't. So going forward, we're going to certainly work tightly with them.
Okay. And then just one follow-up to my initial line of questioning. The current zoning of MU and the requirements for the special use permit that I was just asking about under this proposed change, if you were under the MU, I believe I heard that some of those requirements don't exist, that you can just go by right to permit and eliminate the opportunity to allow this body or others to weigh in on some of those conditions?
Yes, exactly. Yeah, we, if, if this, if this process is not successful, there, we would go back to the design board, looking at the MU sections that are buildable now, and trying to squeeze a project onto those MU sections. So there, I strongly do not wish to stand here and sound like I'm making threats, but what that does is it pushes us into an intenser development process.
You've answered the question. The idea is the proposed, what we're seeing tonight is going to force you to come through an additional level of review
Yes.
beyond just a building permit.
Yes.
Should the zone change
With a more flexible design opportunity with the MF 30. Yes.
Thank you, Derek.
Yep.
Commissioners, additional questions? Commissioner Gower?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask Sienna a follow-up question. It's actually not a follow-up question. It's a new question related to open space. Sienna, my biggest concern looking at this initially was concern about the loss of open space. On its face, that's kind of what it looks like. So maybe you could just quickly distinguish for me the difference between this proposal and someone that might have a concern about, you know, in an HOA or some other kind of scenario where there's been open space that's essentially deed restricted. Someone might have a concern that the city might try to do something similar. If you could kind of distinguish this scenario from that other scenario.
Yeah. So, thank you for that question. So, one of the things about this particular area, you know, we do have, you know, the open space zoning, in essence, a mixed, you know, it's connected to the mixed use, but it's open space zoning, and it's running through private property. Certainly, you know, Derek gave you some good background on kind of how it was applied. It was applied in a swath. You can see it starting, you know, much further west of the site, heading on through. It actually encompasses the Reno Rendering facility site, which I found to be interesting. And over time, UNR has changed their plans. They're not expanding their campus to the east. And so as we look towards, you know, what is an appropriate master plan land use and zoning designation there, we take into account some of the natural features on the site. Is there public access available? We do have the ordage. It is being protected with the application of the open space zone all along the north, and that's consistent with the previously processed master plan amendment that was, as Derek explained, in process during the update of the master plan. And so we're really trying to preserve that feature that our master plan tells us to preserve the irrigation canal, provide a connection into other open space areas, and then also apply a new master plan and zoning designation to the portions of the property that are developable and where public access is not in place. So, you know, using the deed restricted area for an HOA, you know, when you buy into kind of that planned common unit subdivision, you know which areas are deed restricted, and you know which ones have public access available to them. This is not ticking those boxes.
Well, and I just want to clarify, too, that we don't always, as a city, identify areas as open space solely for public access, right? The city can identify areas as open space because they have particular natural features, rock outcroppings, wetlands, things like that, that we just want to protect as a city, right? Does this property have anything that would warrant protection as an open space, other than what you're describing with the ordage?
No, our policies really guide protection of, you're right, natural resource features such as wetlands, also rock outcroppings, steep slopes. The site has pretty gentle slopes. Most of them, most of the site over 90% is less than 15%. It's been a little bit disturbed just with the ordage going through already, so there's some disturbance on the site. Information in the staff report that was conveyed by the applicant indicates that there's no initial indication of wetlands. And so what we have is a site that was utilized as open drainage in the past. It was used as a pasture. It had some irrigation from the ordage, but that's really its defining feature for protection is the ordage.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional questions? Comments? More motion? I'm just going to start calling on people in a minute.
I'll make a motion if
Commissioner Marshall.
No one else is trigger happy.
Let me just double-check with legal. Do we need a separate motion for master plan and zone change, or wrap it all into one?
The way we have this positioned in the staff report is wrapping it all into one. So I would be happy to do that if it's consistent, if both motions are consistent.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted that clarified before.
Was that one motion or two motions?
I think the way that's written in the staff report as one motion is acceptable.
Okay. In the matter of LDC 20-00025, based upon compliance with applicable master plan evaluation criteria and zoning map amendment findings, I move to adopt the amendment to the master plan by resolution and recommend that city council approve the master plan and zoning map amendment as they meet all applicable statutory and code requirements subject to conformance review by the Reno Regional Planning Agency.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion. Commissioner Velto?
A second.
I think you have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gower, I just want to say that, related to that open space finding that we have, I was concerned and coming into the meeting, having difficulty making that finding. And I know that we're going to have a similar finding that we're going to be asked when it comes to regional planning. I believe that the explanation that Sienna provided and the information that came out during the testimony allowed me to make that open space finding. So I just want to make sure that that's put on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gower. I appreciate that. And I appreciated the line of questioning that you did with that.
Commissioner Olivas, I'll echo that. I generally speak out against conversions of open space to development opportunities. I think that this makes sense. I think that there's a historical reason behind it, that it's, it's not like a developer granted some open space, and then now the economics are different, so they want it back. I think that this was just historically kind of worked that way. And I think that this makes more sense than some of the other requests that we see.
Thank you, Commissioner. Additional comments? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries unanimously up to city council. Okay, our commissioner's been sitting here for two hours and 25 minutes. So I'm going to ask that we take a brief 10-minute break, just so we can get up for a moment, and then we will come back and complete the presentation. Looking at basically 7:38 for returning. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Michelle, are we all good and back online? Are we good? Okay. Then with that, I will bring the meeting back to order, and we will move on to the next item on our agenda, item 6.4, which is case number LDC 20-00021, City View Town Homes, and we will start with a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner John Kropotic, I'm with KLS Planning, I'm representing the applicant. You can see the owner team here is Mike Jerron and Jim House with North Reno Land Developers, they are the developer owner team, and our civil engineer's with us, Ryan Sims, this evening. I always forget, this one's not clicky, okay, we gotta scroll through. You guys know the summary from the staff report, I really had this for, and for a couple of the citizen meetings we had, but a key to this is that, you know, about two-thirds of the site is common area and open space. Obviously, the stuff around the development footprint is constrained. Single biggest issue we've had in this process is that we are committed to one-story houses. We had to work that a lot because of the nature of the constraints on the site, directed our architect to keep it at one story and also trying to create some interest. And so we have 19-foot maximum height that does in fact comply with the CCNRs that have been around for many years, in my estimation, and working with several of the neighbors, plus we had our own private neighborhood meeting, by far the single biggest issue. I'm completely confident and accurate to say that we have that completely wired as it now sits. There is the footprint. Actually, I'd like to show this one to go along with it, and you can see, I think, and if it's safe and appropriate for me to say that if you ever want to look at an example of a footprint of a development project that conforms to the hillside, this is a great example. You look at the green, that is the 0 to 15% terrain, and you see our envelope in black wrapping around it. So it basically lays over the top of the flat land, everything else remains as common area and open space. Melody Lane, our private street is in fact a private street that intersects Melody Lane there, and you see the 10 townhomes, roughly 2,000 square foot each unit, all in duplex fashion. There is a rendering of the elevations. Again, the challenge here was to create interest to the eye and to a buyer, and keep the height at 19 feet, which you can see we have there. The side elevations are basically facing each other, of course, by the way we have this thing shaped. In terms of cross-sections, we've done a lot of them, I'm just gonna show you some representative ones that are pretty typical of what's going on. So if you look at the shorter one, that goes right through the fat part of the site, you can see that section here. This is where we spent most of our time sharing and educating with the neighbors up there. So if you look in the middle of the screen, that is our proposed townhome, again noted at 19 feet. To the one side of it, you see the street, transition slope up, adjacent to the houses that are on Ridgecrest Drive overseeing the property. So you can all appreciate that by far the biggest issue here was somebody sitting at their first story, or in their yard, or their deck, on the first level, and being able to look without any encumbrance to their view over the top of that townhome. That's what we've accomplished, and you'll see in the next slide, actually, this slide is probably the best one that shows. So there's this photo, you know, a photo simulation, some visual analysis we've done, yes, this is precise, not precise to the foot, but obviously within a couple of percentage, perhaps 10% worst case. And the idea here is there's the finished elevation of our houses with the bulk, and what you see is sort of a screening of McCarran Boulevard looking out, and then above the eye, you clearly see downtown is unobstructed, and of course, even more of a trophy view is the Sierras in the background. You know, I've been at this commission many times where we talk about view protection, we don't really have a responsibility to deal with it. In this case, we absolutely do because of the history of this, the CCNRs and deed restriction that says precise elevations based on where you're at on the property for each of the houses, precise roof elevations is what it means. This is a little more expanded view, different perspective, not quite as pretty, but you get the idea here. Again, typical cross-section, actually, this one is from a specific area, right there, the one goes through Home Depot. Red line from Ridgecrest Drive through Home Depot, and here's what you see looking from there. Key point is that looks right over the top of the townhomes, over the houses of Scottsdale Road, above Home Depot, basically into that area across Virginia, excuse me, McCarran, which is the big shopping center on the south side. This is the one that's been the most sensitivity because if people have view premiums that they really value, and there's value in their real estate because of that, this is sort of the angle that's typical. This is from Steve Rarick's residence, you're gonna hear from here tonight. We met with him on his property, we offered in our neighborhood meeting to meet with any of the people here that showed up, take pictures, or you take pictures to us, send them to us, and we would model this, and nobody took us up on the offer after we showed them this. So this one is specific to Mr. Rarick's property, and again, that is the one that I mentioned a little bit earlier. In terms of, so I think, you know, kind of what we're saying is, if we did something right here, certainly the hillside and how that's managed with the footprint laying over the flat land, minimal disturbance, a nice amount of parking that's gonna be provided, two driveway spaces, two garage spaces, plus some guest parking on the private street. So, and a lot of separation, right, in all directions, vertically and horizontally, a lot of separation between all the adjacent houses. Community outreach, we had a private meeting, we had an NAB meeting, it went very well. Again, last Monday, we had our private meeting and hosted it in the neighborhood so that we'd hopefully get a good attendance, I think about 15 people showed up. And we basically talked a little bit about traffic and a lot about views. So I think I will leave it at that, I'm sure the commission has some questions for me or for Ryan or engineer, and be glad to fill those at any time, and leave it at that for now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, John, we'll call you back with questions. Under presentation from staff, Nathan, welcome back. We saw at the beginning of the meeting, you were a little quiet for that one.
Thank you, Commissioners, good evening. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. This is a little off the kilter. John did a pretty thorough job covering the nature of the request, I'll just give a little bit of background information. The 10-acre infill site is accessed off of Melody Lane to the northeast of this site area here. The site is considered disturbed, it was previously used for cut and fill for the nearby Home Depot location, so it is a disturbed site. Previous entitlements were for a nine-lot residential subdivision with common area, which is the existing platted lots here that you see in this representation. In 2007, a request was approved for a 29-lot townhome subdivision and associated special use permits. A time extension on that request was granted but was never recorded because of the recession. So the request before you tonight is for a 20-lot townhome subdivision, special use permits to enable the townhome configuration, hillside development, and fills greater than 10 feet on less than 1% of the site area. As condition, staff can make the findings and recommends approval. Specific findings to note, as John mentioned, are views, views, views. Protection of that, that this previous entitlement had ample records and citizen neighborhood participation. As John mentioned, there are existing deed restrictions. Basically, the conditions are meant to carry that forward. I would point out that one of the cross-sections that was illustrated had the view limited by landscaping, a condition, and actually a deed restriction would prevent even landscaping from impeding those views. So, views are a primary concern, we feel like they have been adequately addressed and carried forward with the conditions of approval. Also, the access on Melody Lane, we staff had concerns with headlights, guardrail would be required. The tentative concept plan would be some vegetated screening to screen the headlights, we felt like something solid and more significant would be We felt like something solid and more significant would be warranted. So a condition is recommended to facilitate review of that and ensure that there are no headlights impeding off the site area. And conditions 21 through 22 recommending, basically grading considerations to soften the visual impact. There's four-tiered retaining walls in the southeast of the subject site and some conditions specifically related to that. With that, staff's available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Nathan. Again, before I open it up for public comment, I will ask the Commissioners for disclosures. I'll start with Commissioner Gower.
Commissioner Gower, I received emails and have previously visited the site.
Commissioner Hawkins visited the site, spoke to the applicant's representative, and read emails.
Commissioner Velto, I received emails and spoke to the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Johnson received and read several emails.
Commissioner Taylor asked, and I.
Commissioner Levasie visited the site and received email.
Commissioner Marshall received emails.
I have a request to speak for him on this item from Stephen Rarick.
This is one disadvantage.
It's a universal microphone. It works for everybody.
That's good. Basically, everything has been taken care of. I'm happy as far as the view, they've done a great job. I'm welcoming the neighborhood because it's going to increase my values and I won't have to chase tumbleweeds. And I want to thank Nathan Gilbert for his input because it was very helpful. And John Krimpotic for doing a great job. And of course, you know, Mike Jerome. And they had this name up and I've forgotten I met him, but I'm horrible with names. The other developer, Jim House. Those are the people that worked with the neighbors religiously and come up with preserving our views. And we're all thankful for it and we're looking forward to this development happening. And thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Hawkins, sorry, I'm skipping right by you.
John Krimpotic.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Because that's on the side of that slope there, can you talk to me about storm water runoff and sheet flow?
Can we, so you know the code responsibility, right? That is, thank you, Michelle. I just wanted to show you the detention, the little detention area that we've sized so you can see it right here, right? So because of that, you've got obviously some area that's going to generate a little more runoff, right? The typical story of creating a pervious surface, you calculate how much that is for that storm event, and you put it into here. And so there is no increase of runoff anywhere to these houses in comparison to the existing condition that is today. That increase sits right in here. That's your storm drain detention area.
One question. Does this get a sewer pump or is it going to go gravity down toward Home Depot?
We are.
Can you move into your microphone and ask that again?
Gravity to Home Depot?
We are working on a couple of solutions still. We have a way out and a gravity and a pump right now. Right here was a lift station that's going to go away. We're looking at individual pumps from the units or an easement through an adjacent property who we're working with right now where we can gravity out of there. That's the preferred route. But we are, you know, that's just a matter, civil matter between us and an adjacent property owner and a legal easement to the city staff satisfaction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Velto.
John, another question for you. So can you talk to me about the entrance and exit? I'm trying to figure out how wide that road is and is there any issue with cars turning off Melody Lane or whether there'll be a stop there?
So a couple of things, appreciate the question, Commissioner Velto. So several people that live kind of in this area, shoot, my map's just a little bit chobby up there, isn't it? Still can make the point, I think. Mentioned about, you know, this curve. So the good part of a curve like that is it sort of governs speeds, right? People are going around a road like that at a slow rate. Same thing here because we've got a tight radius, so it's going to be a very calming type of speeds in there. And, you know, the fact that we have only 20 townhome units, it's way below any study threshold. But Ryan, our engineer, did do site distance study for here. And he looked at what you can see looking up, what you can see looking this way, and it meets all of the engineering criteria. So it's safe as designed for any engineering criteria that we would use to analyze that intersection. As far as width goes, there is 24 feet plus sidewalk. And, you know, the fact that it will be signed and red-curbed, it's completely adequate. And we have collector streets, if collector streets that can carry 8,000 or 9,000 cars a day that are 30 feet wide if they don't have parking. So it gives you some perspective. A narrow street, but I think a narrow street in a, you know, low-intensity residential environment like this makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Commissioner Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, the access, it looks like there's, but the picture you had was fine. It looks like there's homes on either side of the access there. Were those folks at your community workshop meetings?
They were. This gentleman right here, he is in the audience. This gentleman and his wife were in my office today. We've met twice. And they were also at our neighborhood meeting. We're working on, I mean, we're trying to be supremely accommodating to them because right now they've got dirt, right? You've got an easement there, but if people don't, you know, easements are imaginary lines. And so there's going to be a character change there. So we're trying to look at, I mean, we offered them rock walls, vegetation, extending your yard, fencing, whatever they want, even though the easement is legal and established today just to make good with them. That's where we're at. Same thing with this guy. This guy's a really nice guy. His name, this is Willis right here. And I thought we would hear from him, but he's been very nice to work with in this process. And, you know.
Will this be a gated community?
It is not gated. We have a condition, we've accepted it, no gating.
Okay, so traffic will not be backed up on Melody to come in to the, it's going to be a free?
That's right. Free flow, yeah.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of conditions, Mr. Chairman, at the right time. I'd appreciate if I could mention them to you if now's the right time. A couple of word changes. One is in favor of Steve Rarick's concern and another one I'd like to take on that staff wanted us to, I think, share with the commission.
I guess I would, let me finish my questions first. And then we'll also get staff to weigh in on.
Okay, thank you.
That's good. Commissioners, any additional questions as we're moving through? Mr. Marshall?
I'll reserve my questions to see what you may be proposing for changes to the conditions.
There you go. Your door has been opened.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Can I turn your attention to condition number nine? Please. This one, you know, Steve Rarick, you just heard from him, he's happy. I think it's happy because we've worked a lot with him, we've made some commitments. But I said, when he came to my office today, we'll make a further commitment, and it's just a little stronger. He is protected without any question, the way the CCNRs are written, you all know that. And so staff and I talked about this and I said, what I'm going to do is volunteer this on behalf of the applicant rather than staff because I don't know if it's appropriate for them. And so where it says following height, I inserted the word permanent. So it'd be subject to the following permanent height restrictions. And so it's more of a forever condition, the power of a single word. That's in favor of making him happy and a little more commitment that way. That's it. No, one more condition. So condition number 21, here's what I'd like to propose. And if you could see where I'm pointing to on my cursor here, this tier, these tiers of rock walls. So imagine we're chasing three-to-one slope down a hill and we have those walls there. And we only want the walls, we need the walls to retain that part. It's the only area of the site where it starts peeling away from us, right? Staff says in the last sentence, landscape benches between the proposed south of Lot 17 to 20 shall be provided a minimum of 10 feet. So what does that do? It just makes us chase further down the slope. And we're saying, there's no question that we can just do this responsibly with whatever shrubs. The intent here is to screen the walls. It's not an engineering thing. These are going to be engineered walls, not rockery walls. That's just not a good fit anymore, especially with a series like that. So the idea is a little bit of finesse, tiers of walls, they might vary a little bit in width, and certainly a 10-foot absolute is just going to make us chase them further down the slope. So it makes no sense at all from our perspective if we're trying to minimize disturbance and minimize the height of walls. And we will veg it up any way we can, have got the commitment from our landscape architect to screen that and to soften it. That's the idea. So my language would be, shall be provided then strike at a minimum of 10 feet and then say to screen the walls. Open-ended and there's a good faith intent here with this development team. That's all I had. And I do appreciate, I think, staff, I mean, we had an excellent experience here because this site's had a lot of hair on it and a lot of history. And I learned a lot of that from prior runs at this. And I think Nate's done a great job and other staff. That's the only issue we have that's unresolved, so appreciate the support from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Marshall, I'll leave it to you.
Well, first, just as a general objection, I think we've already had the presentation by the applicant and these were not brought up at that point, so I think that's strike one. You know, this is coming at the end of our questioning period. And, you know, we've had no, obviously, staff is, I don't know if this is the first time they've heard of it, but they obviously need a period of time to respond. And I don't necessarily see why we should accept this at this time, but I'd like to hear from staff on the change to that last sentence on 21. I think the condition of nine is fine.
Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, as John mentioned, there was discussions, particularly with Mr. Rarick's concerns about the deed restrictions. From staff's perspective, these are two separate things. There are existing CCNRs and deed restrictions that are established and run with the land until, I believe, 2040, least 2040. But that's separate from staff's perspective. These conditions of approval run with this entitlement. They could be changed through a notice public hearing and decision made by the planning commission or the governing body. So those conditions of approval are consistent with the deed restrictions. But you heard from the applicant's representative that they're willing to add additional language of permanent at their own request. So staff is okay with that if the record is clear on that. Regarding the retaining wall condition, we'll put up, Michelle, you can turn the overhead That area to the southeast is the four-tier retaining wall, there a minimum of 40 feet in height with proposed five-foot benches. The landscaping proposed would be some shrubbery. Previous entitlements on the site largely were these flat pad lots, and we understand that that is the market for this. But they also included tiered level foundations in areas where this much of fill is proposed. There's up to, I believe, 25 feet of fill to facilitate this. The views are pretty substantial. We don't have significant line of sites, but just looking at, you know, from street view and the visual impact, staff believes would be significant. And while there would be more grading, it would soften the visual impact and would make the existing views for these homes less dramatic and still facilitate the flat pad concept without doing the tiered foundations.
So staff is supporting maintaining the condition as written?
Staff would recommend that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, additional questions or comments? I guess I will make, I'm going to make one, I'm going to make one comment before that. Just, you touched on it and I would mention it as well, just from the standpoint of the presentation. And John, I would say that, well, I appreciate you bringing the condition revisions to us. I would ask that you do it during your presentation instead of during our Q and A time. So I think Commissioner Marshall mentioned that and I will echo that. Just kind of throws the discussion off a little bit as far as where we're at. With that, that was my comment. Commissioner Marshall?
In the matter of LDC 20-00021, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map and special conditions, excuse me, and special use permits subject to conditions outlined in the staff report with the addition of the word permanent in condition number nine.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion.
Commissioner Taylor, a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project. Next on our agenda, item number seven, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a meeting on Wednesday next week.
Thank you. Okay, next, item number eight, staff announcements.
Thank you, Angela Foose, Planning Manager, for the record. Just to give you an update on some recent city council decisions, yesterday's city council meeting, the Bella Vista Phase 2 PUD, which was before you more than six months ago, was finally approved by city council. That had been continued for several months until yesterday. So that was approved. The Reno Gateway Business Park project was appealed. Planning Commission had recommended approval. There were five appellants and that went to city council yesterday and the project was unanimously denied. So the appellate's decision was approved. I'm saying that backwards. But Planning's Commission.
Pardon me, can I hold you?
Yes.
Can I ask that you take your conversation outside of the chamber, please? Excuse me, sir? Sir, could you take that out into the hallway? Thank you very much.
Another project that came before you guys was the North Meridian 120 Time Extension. The Planning Commission had approved that. There was an appeal and Planning Commission, I'm sorry, City Council heard that last night and agreed with Planning Commission. So they upheld Planning Commission's decision to approve that. And that is it.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items.
I don't know where this fits, but there's been some really interesting things that are, just from planning perspectives, obviously circling around, I think we may have touched upon it, you know, single-family zone and how cities, particularly with cities with significant housing issues, are looking at their single-family zoning. And I, you know, I think it's, I know we're trying to move the Title 18 stuff forward, but I think it's an opportunity to maybe take a look at some of those nationwide trends to see if there's an opportunity there to address some of our housing issues. The second thing that I've kind of been tracking a little bit is there's been some cities that are looking at vacant, vacant land within areas they deem critical for redevelopment and looking at different ways of motivating developers to take action on those partials. Not, I mean, definitely from the incentive side, I think we see that in the new master plan. But also there's disincentives that are, that can be available. They say if you're going to leave your, you know, this land within our core vacant, that, what the effect of that is that it deprives us of the tax revenue or other revenues associated the effect of that is that it, it deprives us of the tax revenue or other revenues associated with that development of that site. And that costs us, you know, from a lot, from jobs, from a whole bunch of different perspectives. And I think there's some interesting things to talk about in terms of, is there ways in which we can look at some, you know, whether you want to call them disincentives or incentives, I mean, both carrots and sticks to basically say, let's, let's get some movement here on some of these critical, critical places. I'm not saying wherever there's a vacant lot, but where we deem it appropriate, that, you know, if we're looking at a lot of, you know, empty land within particularly downtown area, those areas where development could happen, could really make, you know, the city vibrant in some of those areas that need it, we may want to look at that. So I don't know if that's something that the planning manager, you know, if you want to take a look at and see if that's worthy of, of an agenda item or a discussion.
Okay, that, that, those are, I'm just trying to think of a mechanism to bring a discussion back to Planning Commission. And it may be more of a, I wouldn't say a workshop, but we could bring just more of an informational item in to look at what other communities are doing. That might be a good way to do that. We could also just do something over a lunch, more of a brown bag lunch. If the commission is interested in just having a general conversation. And maybe we even open it up to more of a, a planning community discussion on these topics.
Thank you.
Just while we're on this topic, one of the previous commission meetings, there was a quest, a request to bring somebody in from Washoe County District Health Air Quality. We have asked them to come and they are going to be scheduled for one of our January meetings. So we will have a presentation from Air Quality, talk about some of the, the programs and the policies that they are moving forward with.
Thank you.
Or thing, just to thank you very much for the increased rigor of the Washoe County. I think it was from pressure from Arlo, I'm not certain where, but their more recent letters really kind of address what I thought was a weakness in terms of trying to project out what are some of the, you know, future enrollment figures. And so I think that was, I appreciated that. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, next item is our agenda, item 10, public comment. For public comment and action item or any general public comment? A nice gentleman in the back corner want to make public comment? Thank you guys for, thank you guys for being here tonight. That's my public comment, I appreciate it. Okay. Moving on, item 11, adjournment. All those in favor?
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.